I'd like to call this June 3rd session of the Hoyoke City Council to order. I'm gonna call the membership from left to right of the room. Counselor McGee is not here, Counselor Bresnahan is not here, Counselor Tomlin is not here, Counselor Leahy is not here, Counselor Alexander is here, Counselor Graney is here, Counselor Lebron Martinez is here, Counselor McGivern is here, Counselor Lisi is not here, Counselor Bartley is here, Counselor Bacon is here, Counselor Shatnov is not with us, and Counselor Valentin is here, and I, Kevin Jordan, am here. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, we do have eight members.
And Soto's not here.
And Counselor Soto is not here, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. God bless the city of Hoyoke and the Hoyoke City Council.
And our city council.
Thank you. I'm now gonna resume the rest of the meeting right over here with... For this evening's meeting, we have invited in three groups and three departments to come and see us. First is the Office of Economic Development, which includes the Creative Arts position, which some counselors had some interest in asking some questions about. That will be followed by the Police Department, which will be followed by the Fire Department. So, I'd like to welcome in Jeff and Marcos. You're welcome to take these two chairs right over here, would be fine. Thank you.
Page seventeen, Mr. President?
I believe that's right. I would turn folks' attention to page seventeen where you'll see the Planning and Economic Development Department budget. So Marcos, generally, most of the department heads, I ask if they have any general thoughts or about their overall budget before we go into any specific questions. Do you have any opening remarks or thoughts?
Sure, I can talk in general about the budget and the creative economy position. We have...our budget is about seventy-five percent funded by the city, about twenty-five percent funded by the Hoyoke Economic Development and Industrial Corporation, and that's taken into consideration the entirety of everything that's under Planning and Economic Development, Planning Board, Board of Appeals, and the Office of Economic and Industrial Development. It's about just under a point, zero point three percent of the city budget. In two thousand and twelve, the budget for the office was increased to accommodate the Creative Economies Industries Coordinator that allowed us to extend our bandwidth and reach into entrepreneurship, clearly in the creative economies, creative placemaking, and marketing the city as a place for innovation. We've talked on other occasions about projects that we've been working on. We have ongoing projects, clearly, whether it's scaling projects, particularly on the entrepreneurship side, where now we're trying to scale them to have a greater impact in the community through Spark, or having from...going from events that we've planned and tested out, whether it be the deposit restaurant concept and having that as a proof point for more restaurants in the downtown, having a how-to pop-up guide, having more public art and improving the gateways in the city, and then just increasing the visibility of Hoyoke, not just in the immediate vicinity of the Pioneer Valley, but throughout the state and throughout New England. Just today, about an hour ago or so, Jeff just came back from New Hampshire where he was prophesizing about the good word of Hoyoke. So those are some general thoughts, and if there are some questions on the projects that we're working on, we'd be happy to answer those.
Sure. I'll take a list, just one second, just a couple things. You said twenty-five percent of the budget is paid by HEADC?
Yeah, so that's take, if we count one hundred percent being economic development and planning. In other years, probably the number that's been thrown around is fifty percent, and that was fifty percent of the Office of Industrial and Economic Development, which is one portion of the office. But so, you know, it's half of half, so it's about twenty-five percent.
Okay.
And this year's budget, it's all put together just for simplicity.
And how does that revenue come to the city? Does the city pay all the expenses and then we receive some sort of check transfer? Just give me the funds flow on that if you can.
Yeah, I believe it's quarterly, HEADC makes a transfer to the city, and the payment to the employees comes from the city.
And could you tell me approximately how much HEADC contributed to the department's expenses over the last year?
Just over a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred and eleven, somewhere around there.
Okay. In the future, it would be helpful if, under departmental revenues, we could have that listed as a line that says "Revenues from HEADC."
I see.
And I understand that these lines here are strictly informational, but that's good information for us to have because that will represent, because on this budget, if you go to seventeen in the current proposed budget, it shows your department only having total revenues of seventeen hundred dollars, but in fact, you're receiving that hundred and eleven thousand in addition to that, so that would make it look a lot better.
Correct.
Just from an accounting perspective, you know.
Right, I guess we're only accounting for like fees received, those are site plan reviews, stuff like that, that the Planning Board receives. We don't really have fees for economic development programs, not that run through the city, but I see your point, it's a good suggestion.
So my question to you then is, of the salaries and the expense lines, the one-eleven just means that these are just a little bit lower than, are they artificially low in that the one-eleven is coming out of these lines so that that's how it's accounted for? For example, you don't put in the full expense and then represent the one-eleven on the bottom, or is this the full one-hundred percent expense and the one-eleven is just going into the general fund? How does that work?
Right, so what this is showing is the seventy-five percent, this is not showing the HEADC contribution. So to give you an example, the line items for Director, Assistant Director of Economic Development and Development Specialist, they are complemented by HEADC funds, and then there are HEADC expenses as well.
So the salary for yourself, for example, fifty-one, six-eighty, that's not your actual salary, that's seventy-five percent?
Well, seventy-five percent...
That is your position, right?
Yes. It's not seventy-five percent specifically of that position, the seventy-five percent is taken globally. My salary is sixty-eight, so the balance between sixty-eight and fifty-one, that's the HEADC contribution for that salary.
Okay.
The second line item, clearly two thousand dollars, is not the salary for anyone.
Okay.
At least not full-time.
So tell me, what is the salary there? Because I'd like to have, just by way of transparency, so we can see kind of like...
Sure. The salary for the Assistant Director of Economic Development, I believe, is sixty?
Sixty thousand.
And the Development Specialist, I believe, is forty-one.
Forty-one thousand.
And I may be off a couple hundred dollars here or there, but...
Okay. And...
Those are the only salaries that are matched by HEADC funds. There is another, there's a contracted position at the moment, that's, there was a three-year contract, which is on a part-time basis, is two times a week, a bookkeeper. I believe that's fourteen thousand.
Does that appear here?
It does not because it has no city match. So it's someone who keeps the books and the finances for HEADC expenses.
Okay. Why wouldn't we put it here as a personnel expense and then put, show the revenue down on the bottom?
I'm sorry, it's not...
So that we know that there's fourteen thousand in personnel there?
Why wouldn't we put it here?
Yeah, it's, right, because like, for example, so you're saying you spent fourteen thousand for clerk, a clerk position.
Right.
But that's offline, that's not appearing in your budget.
That is through HEADC, completely.
Is all the city payroll, or they pay through the city?
No, they're not. I actually don't know if the check comes from the city or HEADC.
Said it correctly, a lot of the other departments, I'll have to double-check, but whether it's Fire Department or different ones, if they're getting grant money, then those positions still represent, they just represent them as a revenue. We should double...we count the positions.
It's, the way I understand, there's a contract through HEADC, which is a separate public corporation, and there's a contract between HEADC and the person for contracted services.
No, I understand, I understand what you're saying, is you have a grant that's giving you this fourteen thousand position, but what it would, in my opinion, would be nice is if we showed the position under personnel, but that the funding source for the position was a HEADC fourteen thousand. Food for thought in the future.
Sure.
You know, as a way of...so this way, because, for example, when we're making a determination as to how much staffing you need, had I not just asked that question, I wouldn't know you have another fourteen thousand dollar half-time position in your office. So when I'm looking up to count how many FTEs are doing the duties, I don't know that because there's this half-time grant-funded job. So it's just, it's that way. We're trying to determine the needs of your department from a, you know, number of bodies' perspective among expenses too. So we need to know what's being spent for this function. Okay, on the expense side, is there anything that's reduced because of grants from HEADC?
There are matching expenses, frankly, I don't have the document from HEADC here, but it's in total no more than ten thousand dollars, I think.
And what, which one of these lines would that impact, the ten thousand?
It probably impacts several of them, printing, contracted services, and John, you should come up for some of these.
Okay, Counselor Graney?
Yeah, just to refresh my memory, please, Marcos, line item fifty-one, one, zero, eight, line item fifty-one, one, zero, nine, the Senior Planner and the Principal Planner, could you explain the difference between those two positions?
Sure.
One for fifty-seven, one thirty-six, and one for forty-eight, one seventy-five.
There are different categorizations in the city's salary schedule. The Principal Planner is Jeff Burkott, he works primarily with land use, zoning, and the Planning Board, engages a lot with the Ordinance Committee on Crafting Land Use Ordinances, reviews the projects that come in for compliance with the zoning ordinance. The Senior Planner, the work stream that she has, this is Claire Ricker, is mostly on infrastructure matters, brownfields matters, complete streets, that kind of stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor McGivern?
Marcos, when you referred to twenty-five percent of the budget is funded through HEADC funds, were you speaking of the budget on page seventeen, Planning and Economic Development?
Yes, that's exactly the, that's exactly what I'm referring to, that this is seventy-five percent. If you were to take the total money that's, that we have to exercise our duties, this would be seventy-five percent of it, twenty-five percent would come from HEADC.
You're learning well. And we've been around for a few years, you can already put the budget in good perspective for yourself. If I could address the HEADC funds, Mr. President, you made some good points and Marcos gave some good answers, but if you remember the history of HEADC, it was started by Mayor Prue in the mid-seventies with very little assets. He appointed at some time to the Office of Economic Development, which is separate from HEADC, which at the time was separate from the Planning Department, Bob Bateman, who at one point pulled off one of the more incredible revenue enhancement scenarios in the city where he, with the sale of some property and with the development of some property, was able to create a number of different assets under the umbrella that we know as HEADC, which is a corporation set up by the city to handle certain economic development projects as put there by the mayor and by the city council. It worked fine, and when HEADC had some money, they said, "We use Mr. Bateman, we'll pay a portion of his salary." We said, "We use, you know, a couple people under Mr. Bateman, we need, you know, we need a bookkeeper or clerical person, we need, you know, some development specialist," and HEADC started paying a portion of the budget. When Marty Dunn was mayor, I think the history was, Marty inherited a five million dollar deficit in the city, and through tough times, the portion of money that HEADC put into this Office of Economic Development grew to a point where at one time, I think one time HEADC pays for one specialist, the bookkeeper is more recent history, but it's money that HEADC has created for economic development purposes over the years, including a revolving fund that's very successful, but is and has been disproportionate to what HEADC really uses this office. You know, HEADC is themselves, a part-time group, and they certainly rely upon Marcus, his position, you know, having a bookkeeper, watching the budget, you know, working with the city council and doing the things that they do. But it literally has created a structural deficit within HEADC. HEADC has put and created, when the good times, you know, came back to the city, the proportional money that HEADC put into the office never changed. Traditionally, I don't know if it ever hit fifty percent, but you know, I disagree with Marcus on the twenty-five percent because this is a combined department budget now, and we've only seen it like this, I think, for first year or second year, where the Planning Department, who I understand comes under Marcus's umbrella and comes under his budget, has nothing to do with HEADC, nothing at all. So the twenty-five percent, I think, is a little bit deceiving. I think HEADC pays for the ser...more than what the services they use from the department, and I think HEADC is fine with that, except that it takes away from monies that could be used for revolving loans, could be used for projects that HEADC is doing itself.
Yeah, my take on it is not, I think it's great, the hundred and eleven thousand we're getting, this is wonderful. My only perspective is just how it appears on the budget. It seems to be a subsidy, and I just would like to see the full cost on the budget and then have it as a revenue on the other, on the other side of the ledger, just basically saying, you know, the person gets sixty thousand dollars, you know, not two thousand dollars. And over on this side, it shows fifty-eight thousand in revenue. Yeah, that's all. It's just an accounting, it's just an accounting. Wanted to ask you about Creative Arts Center. Much hubbly do recently from our neighbors in East Hampton regarding, and I may have mentioned this the other night in the budget hearing, and I did ask that this be reviewed. You know, this is a private organization, it's not a city department, and the question is, it's the only city department, excuse me, the only private entity that...
Oh, yeah. Is that the budget?
Yeah, yeah. It's a private entity that is receiving public funds, and the mayor of East Hampton recently made an argument that said basically, to a food shelter in East Hampton, "We can no longer make these type of direct budgetary contributions to this private organization, this does not meet, you know, all these asundery of different rules and laws." Have we, one, looked at that, and, two, I mean, I'm glad to see we're weaning this off, it should have already been weaned a lot fast, you know, I wish it was at a faster rate than this, quite frankly, you know, although it's a noble organization, no question, but how many noble organizations are there? I mean, what's to say we don't create a line for the Boy Scouts, or Girls Inc., or, you know, fill-in-the-blank organization? There's so many, so many wonderful people doing so many good work in the community. One, I'd like this to be checked out to see, one, if it's legal. And, two, what's the trajectory you see this on to wean it off? I mean, it started off forty-two, and then it went to the thirty-six of last year, and then twenty-eight for this year. Is this gonna be three, four more years? I mean, at the, sort of, it looks like at about eight grand a year weaning down?
Right, well, hopefully, the aspiration's always, you know, that, actually, let me take a step back, you know, philosophically, I'm in alignment. I would rather, from a policy standpoint, the public sector put together a pot of money that is competitive for a specific goal and have entities compete for it, if that's something that were desirable. However, this is something that we inherited, the city was, and we, I think, everyone here, it's been happening for decades now, and it was a high level of subsidy. And so, facing that and realizing that there was much potential in the organization, but without that subsidy, it was probably going to go away immediately because it couldn't stand on its own, the decision was made to make sure it could turn itself around and stand on its own, because, one, the money could go at any point because of city finances, but, two, because frankly, there's some philosophical alignment that, yes, you're right, I mean, what's to say that there can't be a line item for any organization? So the turnaround plan has been to draw that down. In terms of your second question of what is the plan going forward, part of the turnaround has been using Adam's Art Grant money to make sure that the value proposition is different, so not just that it's a do-it-yourself, learn-how-to-do-something center where you pay a fee for a class, take the class and that's it, but that people can self-identify, and you can, you can jump in if, you know, if not saying it with the right thing, but people can self-identify with their, with their craft and take it to the next level, start their own business, because there's a lot of people who do it for a hobby, but frankly, there's a lot of people who see themselves going beyond that, and it's not, you know, just painting, sometimes they're actually creating goods. So, looking forward, we're, what our plan was, was to dip into the Adams Art Grant for two additional years, so there's additional round of funding, which we have applied for, helped the Creative Arts Center apply for, and I would hope that that would be the end of the engagement, just like any other nonprofit, and any healthy nonprofit, they have to have fundraising effort, because if it's not dynamic, if it's not exciting, if you don't have people involved, then that sort of tells you something about your model as an arts institution. So that...
It's about a year out, Marcos, you figure?
That would be, we would find out from the Adams Art Grant late summer or fall, and so it would be like, it would be two years from that point, from whenever we get the money, it would be to twenty-four months.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Bacon was next up.
Thank you. Just to follow up on some of the questions that Counselor Jordan has put forth, I understand that there has been a decrease in the rental subsidy, but in the past, you've come in and talked about how Jeff's time has been spent running the Creative Arts Center and leading the center, and so my concern is that we've shifted away from rental expense, but we've shifted toward staff expense relative to a private nonprofit. And my concern around this is that we're talking about maintaining basic services at a tax ceiling, and so it looks to me like if you put everything all together, that the subsidy is perhaps about the same. So my question would be, out of a full-time work week, maybe Jeff could let us know how much of his time, his staff time, is being spent on the Creative Arts Center, because I really don't see that we're in a position to do this right now.
So, one thing is, you know, in the past and the other is going forward, when we, when we went into the Creative Arts Center, and bear in mind, there was little oversight or the day-to-day operations of the organization, and there was a significant amount of money going in, so it was very important for us and our plan to get in there and make sure that it was operating in a model that served economic development goals. So yes, there was a significant amount of time, particularly in the beginning, restructuring the board, getting people who have capabilities to run a budget, you know, someone that could be the treasurer, someone who can, you know, who knows about, you know, basic construction and codes and stuff like that. Now there's a healthy board, people who know about different things that you need on a board, right, a lawyer, stuff like that. Most of the involvement that has to do with the Creative Arts Center is also through the Artery Program specifically, which is for entrepreneurship, and that's something that is squarely in our interest to foster entrepreneurship and business development. But as of right now, there's a job posting for an Executive Director for the center because clearly that's not, Jeff's time as a city employee is not something that we're looking to continue dedicating to the center.
So for purposes of this budget, how much of his time right now is spent on the center?
So, again, running the center is something that's happened through the board, time on Artery projects such as, you know, business development services and setting those up, you know, events in the community for creative industry, you know, like startups and stuff like that, like the bazaars. It's a significant amount of time, I would say like thirty percent maybe, but that's on a specific project, on the Artery. But like the day-to-day, like answering phones, like taking the, you know, none of that, there's someone who answers phones, who takes the matriculation of students, who tends the center, administrative stuff, there is someone part-time there already, and a lot of the board members, you know, handle the budget and all that stuff. It's really for the Artery, which is the Creative Economy and Entrepreneurship Program.
So maybe I can rephrase my question. If we're looking at his total salary, how many of the dollars of the salary is dedicated relative to the Creative Arts Center itself, separate from economic development goals?
Well, I don't know if you have a way of answering this, but I, it's hard to silo, to say that the Artery is purely creative, the Creative Arts Center and not economic development. The whole, the whole point of the transformation is to make it a center that promotes economic development through the creative...
Right, right, but the other argument is that it's the only nonprofit that has received a huge amount of staff time and tax dollar support for its survival, and many others have come and gone in the meantime because they didn't get their act together. And so, when we're in a budget crunch and we're at a tax ceiling, I need you to help me out by quantifying it to the degree that you can, and if you can't, I'll accept that you don't know, but my interest is in understanding on this position that has been continued based on certain stated economic goals and how we're reaching those goals. So I'm looking for dollars of growth that have come out of the position, or I'm looking for dollars of savings that we are reducing by not having a private nonprofit dependent upon us, so I'm just trying to see the path, and I'm not getting a clear picture.
I definitely understand and appreciate what you're trying to achieve, I guess, and please don't take this as pushback, as not, you know, not wanting to provide the information, it's just that, as a manager who's trying to break down silos in how you get economic development in a weak market and transform that market, it's very hard to do that, right? So take, for example, the hours that I have spent on setting, on putting together the Spark Entrepreneurship Program along with the Chamber of Commerce and Mr. Reyes and the library, right? Do I account for that as, you know, a city employee, or am I working for the Chamber Foundation? I'm working on a project, right?
Right, but it's, that is a developmental initiative that is citywide for a broad economic development purpose, and what we're talking about here is one entity. So that's why I'm trying to get a handle on it, but I'll accept that you just don't have the information.
But the, the events of the Artery is open also citywide, and you don't have to be a member to participate. You don't have to be a member of the center to participate, so it is a service that is open to anyone.
Well, as are all nonprofits, but, thank you.
Yeah, Counselor Valentin?
Thank you. I think I remember Jeff, when you came in and you did your presentation about kind of, you know, where you were at with the position, and this was something that had been filed as an order, so you came in, I think you spoke to us in committee, and then it went beyond from that, and I think, it must have been the Public Service Committee because I remember being there. And I remember you kind of mapping out what your position had kind of directly resulted into certain monies coming in. I don't know if that would answer part of Counselor Bacon's question, but I think maybe it's helpful to just kind of talk... but I think maybe it's helpful to just kind of talk a little bit about the money piece and where, what the update is with that in terms of what is the benefit of all of these things coming in together? So, maybe that makes sense.
Well, well, I, I can, I can point to a few things, right? So, like, say for exa, I'm, I'm gonna point to a few things for, for an example, and then I'm gonna talk a little bit about why it's misleading to only count that, right? So, take, for example, the City of Holyoke Historic Windows, right, on the second floor. There's a fundraising campaign right now for that, for fifty thousand dollars, that Jeff was integral in getting a local manufacturer to donate puzzles for, for the campaign. So, you know, that can get fifty thousand dollars. Working with Mass DOT, getting a grant for services to redesign the gateway underneath 391, which is in the City of Holyoke Master Plan, that's been seventy-five hundred dollars. Just today, Holyoke will receive services and actually payment to artists through a grant from UMass for twenty-seven thousand dollars, right? So, these are direct things that we can talk about. The Adams Art Grant, if it is renewed, that will be another fifty thousand dollars. The issue is, how do you account for, for example, the old Cubit Wire Mill, right? Which was vacant for a while, and it was just bought by a local artist because they believe that the campus, that the campus of activity, the physical campus, but also the relationships that have been built through these partnerships, through entrepreneurship programs, that it's worth investing in it, right? And so, it sells for over three hundred thousand dollars, and they're gonna put two million dollars into it for Live Workspace, right? So, it's harder to account for that. I can, I'm not gonna pretend that I'm gonna take credit for that, right? But it's definitely a part of it. So, just bear in mind that, that yes, there are some direct grants and services that can't be accounted for, but that doesn't account for the effects of what we're doing. Because ultimately, it is part of an innovation-based economic development strategy and a way of trying to fulfill the City of Holyoke Master Plan and the Urban Renewal Plan. But it is a programmatic arm. It's not a real estate transaction effort, right?
Yeah, good, yeah, thank you. Yeah, that's very helpful. Let's see, Gordon, I had, you're next on the list, if you, did you have some questions?
Yeah, if you're done picking on that one line, I was just gonna jump down to the, sorry. I was just gonna jump down to the contracted services line and ask you to explain what's going on there. Thirty-eight, one year, one forty-eight the next year, and thirteen or sixteen in this year's budget.
Yeah, so, that's, the previous year line always appears higher because there has been a purchase order that has been carried over, I think, since 2010 or 2011, which is, so the money is allocated, but it hasn't been fully spent. And that, that project is the redesign of front heritage and a portion of Dwight Street that connects both of them and goes to Maple. And what happened there, it precedes me, but I believe that what happened is DPW had a pot of money for, for the design, and then Planning and Economic Development had another piece of it, around one hundred and fifty thousand, I think. And so, the purchase order was signed with both accounts on it to pay for it, but the DPW account was drawn down first. And this one didn't start to be drawn down till this fiscal year.
So, the one forty-four expended was actually expended, though? That's not-
Uh, no, it's-
Or is that a fiction because it's a PO that's there?
It's retained. The, the actual amount that was on the budget was twelve or thirteen thousand dollars last year. But for some reason, and never, I struggled with this at the beginning too, for some reason, the way that the city has done its accounting, it always appears like the year prior, there has been, you know, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars in contracted services, but it's because there's a hold that's been coming back from two thousand and-
So, when we all sit here in June twenty sixteen, you're gonna tell me that we approved sixteen thousand, but it's then gonna show expended one hundred and forty thousand or something, and we're gonna see sixteen thousand in the twenty seventeen budget again?
Well, hopefully not, because I'm planning on-
Is that like how that works?
Hopefully not, because I'm, I'm hoping to finish the design work in the next fiscal year. We're at seventy-five percent design right now, which means that we're very close to finishing.
So, at that point, the money will be spent?
Hopefully, it will be-
It's sort of a carryover from a prior year, which is why it's not hitting-
That's right. It's a carryover. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Marcos, just going back into the personnel lines. First of all, could you just give me, so I just have first names, so I know who's who when I'm trying to visualize this? So, you're the director. Who, who's the assistant director?
John Dyjak.
That's John, okay, great. And development specialist, who's that?
Tessa Rumbelati.
Tessa, okay. And who's the head clerk?
That is, I have to look at the numbers here to make sure. That would be Sharon Constantinitis.
Sharon Constantinitis, okay. And Jeff is the Creative Economy Coordinator, so we know that one. And then, head administrative clerk?
That is a halftime position. That is Rosemary Simonich.
Rosemary.
Principal Planner is Jeff Burkott.
Okay, principal is Jeff B.
Senior Planner is Claire Ricker.
Claire, okay, we're familiar with Claire. All right. Okay, great. So, with the head administrative clerk position, sixteen thousand expended in FY fourteen, zero budgeted FY fifteen, seventeen thousand four seventy-two FY sixteen. What, what happened there?
This is actually the first time I noticed that block. I don't know what happened there because it should be filled. That position has not ceased to exist.
How, how long has Rosemary been in that position, if you recall?
So, Rosemary was an employee with the city full-time at some point. This precedes me, but nine, ten, there was a retirement-
But certainly for the last three years, or more, okay.
In my time, she's always been there as a part-time-
Any-
Zero, but the expense is seventy-five hundred for a half-year, so-
What's that?
The expense for the half-year is seventy-five hundred.
Seventy-five hundred, yeah.
It's a fifty thousand dollar expense for the year, presumably.
Yeah, so, was there any pay raises in here? Because I'm just looking at this, and it's like, for example, this one has her at seventeen four seventy-two. Is there any, anywhere in here?
There has not, there has not been for her. There is a pay raise for the principal planner and senior planner because they're part of the professional supervisors group, and that was contractual.
Okay. How about the head clerk? Is that some, is that a contractual?
Yes, because they're, I forget the name of the union-
Is that a union position?
It is a union position, yes.
Okay, so they had a union bump, I remember that. Okay.
Those are the only three-
So, you think the head administrative clerk being empty for the budget for FY fourteen, that's just a typo, or?
That must be a typo, yeah.
So, I'll, I'll look into that, that's fine. But it seems to jive with what you're saying here. And is that a union position?
No.
No. Is it just proposed for an increase?
It's not proposed for an increase.
Then why is it seventeen four seventy-two? Are you increasing the amount of hours?
Dollars expended fiscal year fourteen is year-to-date, so we haven't finished fiscal fourteen, right?
No, we're in fifteen now. Fourteen was sixteen one thirty-seven. And for the first half of the current fiscal year was seventy-five hundred dollars. But next year, it's proposed at seventeen four seventy-two.
I see. So, I'll have to look at that one. I, I did not put her in for, for a raise, and I didn't think the mayor was either. So, that's something we'll just have to look at.
All right, can you get back to us before June twenty-fourth on that?
Yes, definitely.
And the two planner positions, are they union?
Yes, the two planners, they are.
Okay, and so, those, those increases must be pursuant to their agreement, I would assume.
Yes, two professional supervisors.
Okay. What's the three thousand new line for temporary and seasonal work?
That would be for summer interns. We, particularly in the short term, had some projects that we had an interest in doing. They're more expensive than, than we thought they were. But I think that with some summer interns, we can do a portion of it, which would be cheaper, particularly with field, field data gathering and geocoding, which probably if we paid a contractor, we would be paying the contractor rate, but the information ultimately would be more or less the same. So, this gets us, I forget what the calculation I had made, but, you know, over, around three hundred hours to send folks around. And we had in mind some stuff around signage and potentially some damaged buildings or historic assets.
All right. My, my last question, at least I think so, will be on the DEP compliance and fines. I see that that went up rather considerably here. From thirty-five hundred to sixty-two hundred, is, we got some new dilemma?
No, so, last year, we weren't entirely sure what the fee was gonna be. We put it in for five thousand because that's what I had ballparked what the fee was gonna be. This line item was cut because my estimate was between thirty-five hundred and five, and understandably, tough, tough budget time, so, so it was cut. We had to find the money from another line item because the bill came in at sixty-two hundred. So, that's, that's-
And we anticipate this is gonna be, again, sixty-two hundred for this coming twelve months?
Uh, I do anticipate it's gonna be sixty-two hundred. Part of the reason why contracted services is at sixteen is actually I'm hoping to use a couple thousand dollars to put the next steps together for Mountain Road. Now that we've gotten the grants for Auto Mania, that's gonna be our next priority in terms of closing that out so that we don't have to pay these anymore. Because you do that for ten years, that's sixty-two, geez, sixty-two thousand dollars. That was bad. So, it's much better to take a portion of sixty-two thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollars, and just close it out now.
For sure, for sure, yeah. Okay, Council Bertley?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. So, I was just looking at the object code five one one oh four. I, I don't really think we should be using everybody's name like this. But, so, that position in FY fourteen was budgeted at one seven four seven two, and FY fifteen is budgeted at one seven four seven two, and FY sixteen, it appears to be budgeted for one seven four seven two. So, it doesn't look like there's been any change in that, Mr. President. It might have been, and this wouldn't be the first type of graphical error we had in the, in the budget. So, I, I don't, you know, I don't wanna have Marcos belabored by a major research project, but that, I think, if, hopefully that'll-
Which one, fifteen, are you referring to?
The object code we were just discussing for the-
Fifty-one one oh seven?
Yeah, five one one oh four.
No, I'm referring to fifty-one one oh seven. That's the one I have a question about.
I, I'm sorry, that's, that was a former object code. That's, yes, I was talking, this is, the object code changed, yes. Five one one oh seven, yes. It was, yeah, they were in a, let me just check my former budget at page nineteen. It, the same, same, yes. It was a different object code because it was a different, last year was under Office of Economic and Industrial Development, now is Planning and Economic Development, Mr. President. So, but it's the exact same job title. With the exact, with the same budget amount.
So, the historical is just typo'd? According to the FY fifteen budget, it is. Because it says, it says here, you're right, they did use to carry the, for head administrative clerk, it did use to carry the object code fifty-one one oh four. But it says here, spent, seventeen four seventy-two was what was budgeted for by the city council last budget cycle.
Yes, sir.
And it's blank.
Yes, sir. I, I, I understand.
So, okay. So, that makes sense, then. So, it looks like that is just a typo in the budget.
Armless error.
Yeah, hey, the other night, we had one point five million in typos, so-
Who's counting?
What's, what's seventeen grand?
Who's counting those? Right, yeah, so, so, but, may I?
Oh, yes, fire away, yep.
So, Marcos and Jeff, I was, I was happy to, happy to see the, you pretty much held your budget steady, but I just wanna echo what Kevin and, and Joe's background was, obviously, is always vital on this. But, you know, Joe has it all in his head. It would be helpful to have it on the paper, just for us.
We have to wait for the autobiography.
No, it's not coming out. It's a book signing. Look for it, that's a, that's a bestseller.
Oh, absolutely.
Good oil, anyway.
Right.
Right, so, I, I didn't really have any, I mean, this is very bare-bones, straightforward budget. But I, I guess I, I just wanted to, I know we're just on a budget here, but I, I just wanna hear, Marcos, just, just a, just a touch to expand upon a little bit some of the, you know, the Reader's Digest version of just some of the three or four highlighted projects that were, I mean, that have come in, that have been generated by, by your office and the, you know, maybe with the dollar amount next to it. And then we can compare that to your, we'll just say, with, with HEDX money, we'll just say your budget is, you know, half a million dollars, but I'm just gonna, I'm just rounding, so.
Sure. Well, I'll, I'll try to excite the crowd here.
I've already done that, so just get, just get the data, yeah.
Well, look, a, a few years ago, we, we started out with Holyoke Points of View. Last year, we did Next Stop Holyoke, which will start up again this year. But this year, for the first time in several years, Celebrate Holyoke is coming back. And so, that, that has been a progression of, you know, Jeff working with several community members to the point where community members are really taking charge in that. Clearly, we're still involved, but that is, that is a big thing to bring back and has local economic development impact. One of the, the more interesting projects that we have going forward right now, we haven't really announced, but now's as good of a time as any. The gateway under three ninety-one, which has been identified in the master plan since nineteen ninety-nine for improvement, has, has really laid just, you know, an eyesore. One of the, one of the grants for technical assistance that, that Jeff won was engaging Mass DOT in this infraspace program. Only one of ten locations across the state to win this designation. Several of those locations are in Boston, I think, about three of them. So, it's less than ten communities. We've already designed a conceptual plan for, for what that space would look like, and it would have a, what do you call it, a sculpture garden and some projections along the canal. And so, what we expect as the next step is identifying some, some funds or operational funds from Mass DOT that they could dedicate to the project and really transform that gateway. And really, with some in-kind just work from DPW, we could probably make a very, a very interesting project right there, engaging with the local manufacturers and businesses that are there, really getting their buy-in. That has the, the ability to transform the entire, that entire gateway. The grant that was just announced today by UMass, that twenty-seven thousand dollars, that will identify a few locations in the city, and it will actually pay artists in the community to create placemaking art, artwork. I mentioned a little bit about the, the fundraising with the, with the city windows. In fact, the first two windows were already installed. Do you wanna talk about any other projects?
I thought they were asking about your project.
Oh, I'm sorry. I totally misread that question.
Well, you, you did, but that's okay.
You should have stopped me, David.
No, no, it's okay.
You did right, you did right.
Jeff, if you might just expand it just a minute, then we'll, we'll circle back to the nuts and bolts, Marcos.
Sure.
I mean, I'd say that, you know, to kinda answer Linda's question too, with the Artery, you know, most of my time with the Creative Arts Center is really just taking up with the board meetings. I've gotten it to the point where I've got enough people on the board where they're taking care of the day-to-day. So, past last year, it wasn't as involved. When we were moving it, yes, I was very involved. So, that's, you know, Marcos's thirty-seven percent is a little high, I think. And then so far as other projects, what did you talk about again?
Everything.
Everything, yeah, you hit all, a lot of them on the head.
Just the, maybe the Adams Art Grant, where's?
Yeah, so, the Adams Art Grant is to reposition, the Creative Arts Center has been a great community tool for a hundred years. And the creative economy is changing. And so, to reposition the Creative Arts Center for that, the Adams Art Grant is gonna help us do that by adding business development resources and the creation of marketplace opportunities for people in the community. So, we've, we've, we've done things like shore up the Creative Arts Center's admin functions like by getting an online registration software so that a younger generation can interact with the Creative Arts Center and find these business development tools the way they're gonna find them, whereas the quilters are still signing up and sending their checks in the way they've always sent their checks in, you know? So, we've done a lot of modernizing so that the Creative Arts Center can be this community tool. We're also sharing that resource with other members of the community so they can, they can book classes online and in different spots. So, we're, we're really hoping to break the walls down of the Creative Arts Center so that it's really- so that it's really running programming or helping run program all over the city.
Can you talk a little bit about Equirox and how that worked and, you know, huge event at night?
Right, so Equirox was a concert and social networking event that was held at Gateway City Arts. The artery helped sponsor it and make it happen. The crux that was for-profit organizations, mostly out of Amherst and North Hampton, were looking to have a millennial meetup and getting young creative entrepreneurs talking and meeting with established creative entrepreneurs so that they can rub off and mentor. So, you know, the thinking with it was that millennials won't come to a networking event, but they will come to a show. And so they hold concerts, but also had art demos and things like that. And it was a six to one, you know, six P M. to one A M. kind of event that brought in about two hundred college students from Amherst and around the area. We even hired a bus to shuttle people in just to sort of get that feeling of what it would be like to have public transport from North Hampton to Holyoke when the train starts running. So that was Equirox. But we've also done, coming up in the next couple of weeks, is a design thinking workshop, which is a sort of relatively new way of thinking about business. We're going to introduce that to the community so that people can take advantage of that. It's a much more approachable way to start a business. And then we've run artists and training and internship workshops. Because one of the big things with interns and artists is they don't think they can do it. So we brought UMass down to run a program so they could understand it's not hard, it's very easy. This is what you need to do to get an intern and what you do when you have an intern. So we've used the artery as a community tool to bring these creative sector infrastructure resources to the town. Without it, I wouldn't have the ability to hire UMass to come in and do that.
So what, so can I answer the actual question that... Can you tell me what the question was? Because I clearly misread it.
The Reader's Digest version of just some of the three or four major projects.
Major projects occurring right now, train station is expected to be operational by sometime in August. We're making steady progress there. Barring any major rain again this week, we should be pouring very, very soon. The stairwells, but that's going very well. The canal walk is going very well. We expect it.
Is there some value, Marcos?
The value of the train station, the entire funding is four-point-two million dollars. The value of the contract for construction is about three-point-three. The difference between the two is, you know, we have to hire a clerk of the works. We have to do soil environmental remediation. That's one of the really great surprises of building in an old industrial city. You sometime find two, three-thousand gallon tanks of oil. So that'll be some money to clean up. We have the budget for it. You know, land acquisition, this council had approved the land acquisition before, so that's four-point-two million dollars. The canal walk, the construction contract is three-point-five million dollars, but the funding for it is actually around four-point-three because the state has to hire a clerk of the works. There's a contingency budget. Contingencies do happen. We've probably run into just over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in contingencies, which is not a bad thing because contingency was around four-hundred thousand dollars. But again, things do happen. You thought the pipe was going somewhere, and it's not. Water goes in, no one knows where it goes out. We have to build a new pipe. That should be open and operational by, I believe, October. There are some portions that may have to be done in the spring, you know, painting and stuff like that. But the major parts of the infrastructure should be there. Other recent projects, we've closed out two-sixteen Appleton cleanup, as you know, one-ninety-one Appleton. We're about to start six-eighty-nine Main Street, former Auto Mania. We just gave the notice to proceed a few days ago on the demolition and cleanup specs for Parsons Paper. We managed to get that money to the Redevelopment Authority through a private agreement with formerly Northeast Utilities, now Eversource. So we have money to pay for that and along with some contingencies. I expect that hopefully by the fall to come to the council with a framework for financing or funding the redevelopment of Parsons Paper.
That's very helpful. Thank you, Marcos. Thank you, Mr. President.
Come in quickly.
Yeah.
Marcos, do we have anything out there, any sponsorships or any... Anything related, anything going on with the Volleyball Hall of Fame? Any projects that might bring something into the city?
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. So one of the things that we're looking at for the, in fact, I wish I would have launched it already, but frankly, just putting out fires in the end of fiscal year has impeded us from moving too much forward on this, is a tourism assessment plan. The mayor mentioned this in his State of the City earlier this year. There's a series of assets in the city that could really be, and this is probably true for the valley, but we need to think about ourselves here a little bit. There's a series of assets that we have here. The Volleyball Hall of Fame is one of them. The assets around Mount Tom, the Children's Museum, that can really be thought of as destinations of tourism and how do we better market the city? But also, how do we get through some of the challenges to get more people around here? So around Mount Tom, one of the issues is there's land division and management of some common problems there. You know, the Volleyball Hall of Fame, how can we work with... How can the city support their programming and how their programming interacts with other entities in the city? If people are going to stay here, how many beds do we have available of the quality that people want, right? Where people go in and eat? Several of these strategies we've already been working on, like with the liquor licenses and restaurants, but how does it come together? And so that's something where we've identified a funding stream for, and we're hoping that we can launch in the second half of the year.
Great. All right, well, Marcos, Jeff, and as well as to John and Tessa, thank you all for coming. We really appreciate you coming in for the budget hearing tonight, and we wish you well.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Police Department. All right, welcome. Chief, Captain, do you have any opening thoughts or remarks you'd like to go over regarding the overall of your budget before we get into questions?
Certainly. Good evening, councilors. It's always nice to see everybody. The Holyoke Police Department is committed to providing the highest level of public safety through the use of effective and efficient management practices while adhering to clearly defined legal and constitutional guidelines. We will work with all other city departments as well as local, state, and federal agencies to ensure that we provide the maximum service to our community within the allocated budget. Currently, the Holyoke Police Department has a hundred and ten full-time sworn officers. Part of that includes myself. Chief, four captains, eight lieutenants, fifteen sergeants, eighty-two patrol officers. We've also hired twenty reserves at this point. They're not all up to the level of working, but we do have twenty reserves on the books. In addition to our reserves, I have a dozen dispatchers, my secretary, a bookkeeper, five full-time record clerks. And then let's not forget about the hard-working auxiliary police officers that perform, handle over a hundred vets for us every year in the city. The Operations Division is the heart of my police department. The uniform patrol officers are the backbone of the police department, and every day they handle calls for service. And while not on calls, they patrol their sectors and beats and check their businesses in hotspots that we've identified. In addition to these hotspots, the Patrol Division has been very proactive in trying to address community issues. We recently created a partnership with the owner of the building at Appleton and Elm to address the ongoing problems that have been going on there, the calls for service over the years. Just within the last few days, we've made an excess of sixty arrests at that location. The police department realizes the fiscal challenges the city is facing, and we continue to deliver the best police services with the resources provided to us. I look forward to working productively with the city council on this budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt, any thoughts or your...
No, I'm good. Thanks.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay. Chief, let's see here. We had, I want to skip back over to Personnel, try and stay, well, starting with pages eighteen and nineteen, councilors. And I wanted to address the E-nine-one-one dispatchers. I mentioned this to you briefly, Chief, in advance of your remarks. I want to walk through kind of where the numbers are at and kind of where we got to the number that's proposed. As you'll see in the budget, budgeted for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen that we're in now is four-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars. Expended in the prior fiscal year was two-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-one. So for fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, we spent two-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand dollars roughly. That number was budgeted two-hundred-thousand dollars high in FY fifteen. And as a result, this year, you have transferred out of that line one-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-and-sixty-nine dollars in the course of this fiscal year so far. And so that currently has a revised budget of three-hundred-and-four-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars. Now, having said that, the request comes in at four-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars. And so my question is, FY fourteen, you spent two-eighty. You've said basically you're going to spend that exact amount plus twenty thousand dollars, three-oh-four for this FY fifteen. Now you've asked us for nearly five-hundred thousand. It looks very high. Please explain.
Certainly. The five-hundred thousand is the dozen and so people, I guess for the sake of purposes, their salaries for the year. This past year, we were down two dispatchers to this past spring, which allowed us to get up to twelve. We were short with that. In addition to that, because we are a primary PSAP, we apply for money from the state to get money for training and dispatchers and equipment. And we do get funds from that.
Yeah, but nevertheless, my point is you've only spent two-eighty in FY fourteen. You've spent three-hundred this year. That's going to be to June thirtieth.
Right, so how do I get to the...
So why would I possibly want to give you four-ninety-one for the next fiscal year? That's two-hundred thousand over the current run rate. I mean, you're not hiring five, six, seven, eight more people. I mean, two-hundred thousand, that's a lot of money.
Councilor, all I can tell you is we're short for the past year for most of the...
By two people?
Correct.
So how much do each one of those individuals make per year on average?
You know, I'm pulling fifty grand out of the top of my head, maybe less.
An E-nine-one dispatcher makes fifty grand?
Well, hang on. Their base salary is forty-one-six-thirty-four.
Okay, so forty-one-six-thirty... I see the auditor's got his hand. You want to throw him a lifeline here and help? Oh, yeah, Bellamy, just come on up to the microphone here so the folks at home that are watching can help.
Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we had about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in grant money for the PSAP that the chief was talking about. And that's what creates the difference between the three-hundred thousand dollars that was spent and the five-hundred thousand dollars that was budgeted. We charged a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of expense for nine-eleven people to that grant. Am I right?
Yes, sir, you're correct.
It still doesn't explain, though, why you would take all that money and transfer it out of the line.
We moved it into where the grant money was. The grant is in a fund somewhere, so we transferred...
Well, what budget line did it get, the one-seventy get transferred to? There is no grant line.
No, the grant is a separate fund.
Okay.
So we took the money out of the general fund and we put it in the grant fund to match the expense to the revenue. Because the revenue was in the grant fund.
There is no grant line in the budget.
No, no, the grant is a separate, is a whole separate fund.
Right.
Like every grant that we get.
Okay, so that would be, the grant would be an appropriation that would come in and go into the general fund. You can't direct take grant dollars and put them back into the police budget.
No, we put, we set up a fund for PSAP. Let's say it was fund number twenty-three-twenty-four. We put, when five-hundred, when the money came in, we put the cash in there. And then we transferred the salary expense from the general fund to the grant fund.
Right, but...
Which is a separate entirely from the general.
So that one-seventy went to... where does the grant fund appear in the city budget?
It doesn't. The grants are all separate. The grants do not appear in the city budget.
I don't think you can do that, Bellamy. What this says here is one-hundred-and-seventy thousand was transferred out of this line in the police department budget. That has to be moved as a positive into one... Either it went into injured on duty or overtime or one of these other sick leave. I'd actually like a copy of the...
We're conflating the actuals and the budget. I'm talking about the actuals were moved out. So therefore, the chief was free to move the budget around, which I think he moved into overtime. But the actual amount spent from the actual column was moved to the grant.
And this is a grant we don't have anymore?
It's a grant that, it expired.
We applied for it. There's no guarantees on it. We try to apply for it every year.
Yeah, we get the, yes.
Like, I was at a meeting yesterday because of the next-gen nine-one-one system's coming, which will integrate, make our dispatchers' system better than what it is so people can text in and computer in. There are no guarantees on the grants. We are PSAP, so we put in for it. We usually get it, but they've also told us to express less money in the upcoming year.
But what you have done has been an overstatement of this line. We, you really, you asked us for five-hundred thousand dollars effectively for the last two fiscal years. And you've taken two-hundred of it roughly and put it into overtime and other expenses out of this line.
Well, and I'm going to tell you that the PSAP grant is not two-hundred thousand dollars.
Well, a hundred and seventy.
So, and, you know...
Then you transferred a hundred and seventy thousand out of these lines. You spent two-eighty of municipal funds in FY fourteen, and you spent three-oh-four for this year. Not four-ninety, not four-seventy-seven. So why would I want to give you that? Again, it doesn't make any sense.
Well, the four-ninety figure...
Because you're going to transfer it out.
If I get grant money, and if I don't get grant money, I can't pay my employees.
So as, July first is about to happen in four weeks, and you don't know?
No, I don't.
And you didn't know last year?
We applied for it, and like I told you, I was at a meeting just the other day, and they said, "Expect to be, that numbers are going to change. There are no guarantees."
So then when do you come to us and say, "Hey, we got the grant money, and I want to transfer it back into the general fund"? You could have done that. You could have asked for a deappropriation of your budget. What you take the one-seventy for is then and go and spend it on overtime and other things.
Well, I do think we're transferring money...
Not for E-nine-one with dispatchers.
I do think we're transferring money in, in the, for free cash this year in the neighborhood of three-hundred-and-eight-thousand dollars.
From where?
Leftover old grants, part of that's PSAP grants.
Yeah, the grant, any grant money does not go that... Grants have a separate line. This, we don't vote on the grant, any grant. Those are separate funds under, what's it, fifty-five A? I mean, we don't have any say over those. My point is, is these funds that we give for a specific purpose are not being used for that purpose. Most of these are pretty close. That one is like two-hundred grand. That one's way over. And so my point is, what we should do is cut that to three-oh-five. And if some point down the road, you find out that you need this money, then we put it back. But to, because what, basically, this department has been allowed to do is take those supplemental funds and just move them around to other purposes, not for E-nine-one-one dispatchers. And that's gone on for two fiscal years in a row.
Well, Councilor, I would tell you, if you take the forty-one-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-four base salary and times that times twelve, that gets you just under five-hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, then why are you spending only three-oh-four for this year?
Right, because I had PSAP money to put in there and...
PSAP money ain't going into that number. You know what I'm saying? Is, this is, this money is three-oh-four is what you've spent. And last year before that, it was two-eighty. So what I'd like to do is give you three-oh-five again. And if somehow down the road, you don't get the grant, then we can reconfigure.
Well, Councilor, your job and the rest of the city's... Well, Counselor, your job and the rest of the city councils, the bottom line is you set the budget to whatever it is.
Okay. All right, so basically, I just want to make the observation on that line that I'm telling you that I would propose a cut to this line because of the fact that this, nowhere has anywhere near that money of four ninety. That's a lot to be off, has been spent in the last two fiscal years. So that's just an observation. Most of the, all the other ones are, are in the ballgame. I wanted to ask you about the buybacks, and I wanted to ask you about overtime. So let's just start with overtime. Always a golden oldie whenever it comes to police or fire departments. Last year, we budgeted seven hundred eighty-one thousand, eight hundred dollars. Current year, excuse me, current year FY fifteen. And as I'm looking at all of these up here, you're probably, you're, let's see, five, five, okay, five, six, six-ten, six, you're about a hundred thousand less than that. Is that going to be sufficient, you think, to do it? Because it wasn't for this year, and the year before, you spent a million, and I know there's been a lot of talk about, you know, this is realistic budgeting, and we're trying to avoid just unnecessary transfers during the year. And, and I guess what I'm saying is, is we'll seem to be about a hundred, hundred and ten thousand off from where we were for the current year.
All right, so what are you asking me for the bottom line, how much money I need in overtime?
Yeah, yeah, right. That's the number. And that's the number you're committing to, that's in this budget.
Uh, I'm embarrassed.
Because it's not what you requested.
Right.
It's eighty thousand less than what you requested.
Right, but what I think what the mayor did in this particular budget was, he took special events and separated them out, so there's?
But he also divided your request that way. If you go to page eighteen, he, you know, there's, yeah, and, which is good, by the way, and I, and I'm glad, and I know the union had requested this as well as I did, to, that we break those all out, which is great. You requested here for, you know, parade weekend forty-seven, the mayor gave you forty-seven. Fireworks, thirty-three was requested, you were provided with thirty-three. Elections was thirty, you were provided with thirty. Snow toes and other event overtime, nineteen, you were provided with nineteen. And I support all of those. Where I'm, where I'm looking at regular overtime, you requested six fifty-two, you got five seventy-one.
Which is the same I got as last year, and we know that's not quite enough.
No, it's not as much as you got last year. You got more than that. You got seven hundred and eighty-one thousand, four hundred dollars. My point is, the amount that the mayor gave you is a hundred thousand less than what you're spending for this year. It's three hundred thousand less than was spent in FY fourteen. So I just wanted to emphasize the point here, is this a transfer waiting to happen?
Counselor, as in last year, I tried to work the best I can with the numbers I have.
But you had to come back.
That's right.
So you're coming back again?
I don't know.
Okay. So these numbers are just, you know, shots in the dark. They're not really like, this is my budget, this is what I live on, and this is the way it is. And I guess that was the point that some of the councilors have been making, that, you know, this, you know, some of the numbers were, you know, these are shim sham, or this is, you know, shots in the dark and all this type of stuff. My point is, we've heard from the mayor, this is your budget, and that's what we're sticking with.
Well, you know, Counselor, I think what we took was what we were given last year, the five seventy-one, right? And then I came back and asked for nine ninety, ninety-five, which was really six sixty-six, hoping that that would be enough for the year. That's what, that's how we came into that, came up with that number.
So?
Even though you see my request?
So come February of sixteen, or March, you'll probably be in for ninety thousand, and then you're going to say, well, you know, I did ask for six fifty-two in the budget, and then we're supposed to approve it, or all these terrible things don't happen, or terrible things do happen.
Well, I hope terrible things don't happen.
But that's the proposition that we're given, right? If we don't approve, you know, there's going to be, if we underfund it now, my point is, I want to see a budget that's realistic, that says, whatever the number is, I don't know, I'm not police chief, I don't know how much money for overtime. I'm just telling you historically, what I'm observing as the elected official who approves this is, I'm seeing big, big number, big, big number, budgeted little number. And what I'm saying is, the little number never sticks. It's always the big number. So it's little number when it's, you know, we're putting the budget together, and then we keep coming back for more. So my point is, why not budget it the correct way in the first place?
Right, and I tried to put forth in front of you that six fifty-two number, which is a real, what I?
And we can't increase it, but?
Which I hope would be a realistic number that we can live with. If we get additional PSAP money, that can help offset some of, if there's any overtures, that would be helpful. If there's overtures above that six fifty-two, I don't get the PSAP money, and we underfund the dispatcher account, I can tell you, I'll definitely be back.
Yeah, well, if you don't get the grant, we'll figure it out. But instead of just giving you two hundred to go transfer to something else, I'd rather, I'd rather have an appropriation right in front of me that says what it's going for, right? So let's, let's look at one others, and then I'm going to spread it out to see if some others have some questions. Mine is on the buyback. How many people retired this year? How many people are you estimating will retire in the next fiscal year, according to your estimate?
Sure. Hang on. We had, let's see, we had Fred Seklecki, Jack Collmar, Joey Jones, and Jan Si retire this past year.
So four.
Right.
How many are you estimating if you had to guesstimate?
Right now, I'm guessing we have three, well, four, if you count one on the?
So about the same.
Yeah, about the same, with the exception of, I think we'll be okay with that, but please realize, two thousand and seventeen, I have the following year, fifteen eligible to go.
Right, so we'll cross that bridge when we get to it, as we know. But let's just take a look at your buybacks.
Okay.
All right. This year, you had four people retire. You spent on vacation buyback seventy-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars. This year, you have it budgeted also for four people to retire, thirty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. We're forty short. Okay. Time owed buyback, fiscal year fifteen, one hundred fourteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars. Your budget, same amount of people retiring, twenty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars.
Yeah, well?
Ticking time bomb, financially?
What, for part-time, for pay, time owed?
Time owed buyback, yeah. You've only, you've got four people retiring. This year, you had four people retire. It cost a hundred and fourteen, six twenty-one.
Right.
This coming next fiscal year, you got four people you're telling me are retiring. You've got twenty-two, two seventy in your budget.
That's correct. That's not a ticking time bomb. I'm going off, based on my bookkeeper's projection and what people have accrued on their books.
So there won't be any transfers into those lines? You've got the numbers right?
I'm going off of what my people provided with me.
Because you're off by a hundred grand from the prior year. All right, let's go to the next one. Sick leave buyback, four people, three hundred sixty-nine thousand, six hundred ninety-eight dollars. Your budget, one hundred eighty thousand, seven hundred dollars. So that's off by a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, a hundred and ninety thousand?
I think that's based on, and the actual number for that should probably be two oh seven is what I'm looking at for my figures, but I think that's based on the people that we anticipate retiring and what they have for accrued times.
Okay, let me go to your budget transfer report. Budget transfer report comes from the city auditor's office, and we know that wouldn't be wrong. Says that sick leave buyback line, you started off with an original appropriation of two fifty-nine, three ninety-one. You transferred in one hundred ten thousand, three oh seven, three sixty-nine, six ninety-eight, four people.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, now Kevin looks at his budget. One eighty, seven hundred, four retirees.
And I'm telling you, what I really need is two oh seven, but when we did the numbers, that's what we came up with.
Two oh seven, so that's going to, two oh seven would cover it?
It will. If, if, if?
We'll see.
If the four go, that, we believe that are going.
All right, I just want to make sure that the numbers are where the number's supposed to be. You've got the, you must have the record for most transfers, you know, of any department. The, the numbers are like, council approves X, and then it's the shell game with the dough. I know you don't mean, I don't know, maybe you don't mean it that way, but we got to get the money in the buckets where they're supposed to be a little better. That's my only point. It's like, you know, the ins and outs of money from, you know, you transferred out two hundred and eighty thousand dollars from the patrol officer line. Where did that money, you know? It's, it's shifting around. There's money going into injured on duty. I didn't quiz you on that because I'm assuming that you've got, this year for injured on duty, two hundred and eighty-four, eight thirty-eight went in there. You've got that budgeted at zero. So that tells me you're not going to have any injured on duty.
No, it means we just transfer the money out from that, from the salary account at injured on duty to pay the injured on duty.
But we, my, I guess my point with that is, there should be certain estimates in there. I agree, that is in part why I didn't question you on it, because I'm assuming you're taking from the salary lines. But my point is, you know, these monies, certain estimates historically should be made on those, that you, if, I would rather you put the patrol lines and the other officer lines as accurate as possible, and then put the injured on duty with some amount in it, because you're going to have some injured on duty.
Oh, I truly will.
You always do. There's probably people on injured on duty right now.
There are.
Right, so come July first, we're already running a negative. You've got to make transfers day one.
But they, they, they cancel each other out, Counselor. If I have, if Captain Moriarty's injured on duty here, and he's out of work for a month, and let's say his salary for the month is, I don't know, let's, let's call it five thousand dollars, right?
Yep.
I, I take his five thousand dollars out of the salary account, and I put it in the injured on duty account, it's an even wash, as opposed to me coming in going, I need an extra five thousand, or I know I'm going to have X number of people out this year, I need an extra hundred thousand dollars in injured on duty account, and I'm going to pay them out of that. That means I'm going to be fat in my salary account.
Traditionally, you have, we have made an appropriation into the injured on duty account in many years. You know, it's just something you might want to consider in the future, to have some amount in there so that the officer lines, because like, for example, the patrol officer line was, this year, four point five six million patrol officers. You've got it in the budget at four point nine million. Now, I know people didn't get those kind of raises, right? But what I'm assuming is you're going to transfer some amount of that out. But right now, you're running at four point five six for patrol officers. Budget says four point nine.
Yeah, and I believe?
So I'm assuming there's going to be, you know, shuffling the deck.
That's, I believe that's funding for ninety officers, the four point nine.
Yeah, but officers don't fall from heaven, right? I mean, take, there's a whole process. I want to see what's the run rate. If you're running four point five six million, there should be some number, plus their, whatever the cost of living adjustments or whatever the contract allows, is what it should be. I mean, if you really don't have those positions funded, then, or, excuse me, filled, then, you know?
Well, I can tell you right now, we're, we're at eighty-two officers. We're in the process of hiring eight more of our reserves as full-time officers. Your academy starts in August. That'll bring us to ninety.
Okay. All right, well, it's just that, I'm just showing you that, again, I look consistently year over year over year, and I'm seeing the same numbers, and then I just see transfers coming out, transfers coming out of patrol officer line. Like, for example, in FY fourteen, four point five two million. This year, four point five six. Yeah, that's up a little bit, right? And, but you're always hiring people. Every year you come, you know, we're hiring, we're hiring, we're hiring, right? Because some people leave, some people come in. Four people leave, eight come in, you know, it's all, but the number seems rather consistent. And then when I get the budget, it says, well, four point nine million.
Well, again, all I'm saying is, that's, figure it out at ninety.
Okay. I'm sure there's others that have questions other than me. Counselor Bacon?
Well, Counselor Jordan's asked a lot of them, but the question that's lingering for me is, and we talked about this earlier this year, I think in Finance Committee, when I asked you if there had been any operational changes to reduce the need for the level of overtime, because I think it was when you were coming back in for ninety-five thousand transfer, and at that time, you said, we will. So what I'm interested to know, since the overtime is reduced in this budget, is are there operational changes that you're going to be implementing in July so that we don't end up?
We're actually implementing them, I think, next week. We've, I'm shifting some personnel around, I'm trying to move somebody to a different shift to try to slow some of the overtime down, just staffing levels, because I only got so many bodies. We also just recently took our, our day shift traffic officer and shifted him back to patrol, not traffic. So when we have extra manpower on traffic, he can do traffic, but when we're short, you know, he's going to be driving a beat car. We did the same thing with our code enforcement officer. She shifted him back to patrol. When we have sufficient resources, he can go do code enforcement. When we're running minimum manpower, he can't. He's going to be driving a beat car.
Now, this follow-up question will express some of my ignorance, and I'm, and so I'm not asking it to be insulting, I'm asking it because I don't know. In your budget, you talk about patrol officers, which I'm assuming are the people that are out in the cars, and then you have sergeants, lieutenants, and captains. Do any of the people in those positions also go out on the road, or are those all office positions?
No, we have five supervisors assigned to each of the three shifts, a lieutenant, four sergeants. At various times, there's always one on the road.
So the one on the road might be any of the above? It might be a captain, it might be a lieutenant, it might be a sergeant?
It might be a lieutenant, or it might be a sergeant.
Okay, so if push came to shove, then it would be a possibility that the lieutenants and sergeants could go out on the road instead of incurring overtime as a possibility? Yes or no?
I'm not sure I follow you.
Well, if, I'm just trying to understand the rules, like, so if one of the folks is out on the road at any given time, and say, I don't know, say some unusual occurrence arose, and, you know, you're going to pull the code officer and you're going to pull the traffic officer onto the road, is it a possibility that a lieutenant and/or a sergeant could similarly do that in this model that you're talking about?
They're, they're supervisors, so the lieutenant runs the shift, it's usually a lieutenant and four sergeants, give or take?
Yep.
On, on the shift. The sergeant's answer to the lieutenant, lieutenant runs the shift. Most of the time, he's in the building. He or she can certainly go out onto the road if they want and put the sergeant in the building, but they don't normally drive a beat car.
Right, right, and I'm, and I'm not, I'm speaking of sort of an unusual circumstance.
Well, in, in an emergency, any of us can handle a call for service in an emergency, but in our normal course of business, they're not shagging calls, so to speak.
Right, right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief D, could you give us a definition of what an E nine one one dispatcher is, what their responsibilities are, and what their qualifications would be?
In Holyoke, they handle all types of calls for service. People call in requesting police services, sometimes they call in requesting fire services, and the call gets transferred out. Sometimes they call in requesting medical services, and that call gets transferred out to EMD provider. And then they're responsible for taking the call, entering the data into the computer, so to speak, dispatching the officers out to the particular call, and then making sure that they're clear and they've got what they've needed at the call. And if they need to make any other phone calls, they do that. Minimum staffing in Holyoke is two dispatchers at any time. When we have, you know, we've only got twelve, when we have, some days you have more, some days you have three dispatchers working, but two is the minimum standard.
D, are they trained, well, they are trained, obviously, but are they qualified as medical dispatchers, EMTs, or?
They are, they are, I think when they're initially trained, they get EMD training, but they don't, that hasn't, they haven't stayed up on that. And they do not do, we do not do EMD dispatching. We transfer that out.
You transfer that to the, to the hospital? You transfer that to the, to the hospital AMR service?
AMR, AMR right now.
The, the budget's, going back even further, and Counselor Jordan made some points about grants that I have some follow-up questions on. But it looks like back in fiscal 2012, there were $440,000 was expended. Fiscal 2013 was closer to the 460, 470 range expended. And then, as Kevin pointed out, you know, that much was budgeted for in 2014 and 15, but not used. And during you and the auditor, you've given us an explanation as to one reason why money was, was transferred out. And my question is, the grant, what was the name of the grant?
PSAP.
PSAP. Was that grant presented to the city council for approval?
Like I said earlier in the beginning of this, we're returning 308 in this upcoming fiscal year.
But, you know, a grant cannot be used by any city department unless the city council approves the use of that grant.
Right, so prior, prior to my time, yes, the answer's yes.
Okay. When that grant was before us, were the terms that it was going to be used for, for the paying of salaries of dispatchers?
Staffing and training.
Okay, but would it be, what I'm trying to get at is, and we've gone through this before in the past, and it makes our job very difficult at budget time, is we, the Safe Initiative Grant and the Shannon Grant, is probably even a better example, where for years, the argument was, do you use the Shannon Grant? Do you use certain grants to pay for a, a base salary, or do you use the grants for overtime, putting officers in extra, extra hours, extra duty, doing the job that the grant is designed for? And then there were two reasons why we, for the most part, leaned towards the overtime, because, one, we're self-insured with unemployment, and if you start hiring additional people, then, you know, we're gonna be, when the grant dries up, we're gonna be in trouble. And this, if anyone remembers the history of Springfield and their police department, this just about bankrupted Springfield at one time, when they, they went on a hundred, you know, hired a hundred and something officers through, through one of the grants. A grant, and I think Bellamy and you both, and I think we all understand, you know, a grant has to be accounted for to wherever the source of the grant came from, state, federal government, federal government through the state, you know, private source. And, and the accountability is, how did you spend this, and did it, you know, fall within what the, whoever wrote the grant, and whoever, you know, researched, and, and congratulations too, because that's, that's a tremendous grant to have for, for the city. But the accountability, you know, is, is always there. What we're looking for is accountability of the city dollars that goes into any budget. And it's very difficult, you know, as Kevin pointed out, when, when the money is, is moved around. And it's very difficult, you know, to stay on the same page as to your opening remarks to what the police department is to our citizens. You know, you provide a top-shelf, public safety, much-needed service to, to all the people who live and work within the city. The, you know, the, the issue is, if that grant dries up, you're gonna need the $470,000. But the revenue sources to put money into your budget, as we all know, we've talked for the last two or three years in detail, I'm sure the mayor told you this year, is drying up. So last year, I asked you a question, and the question was, you know, has the mayor talked to you about any hiring freezes? This year, I'm gonna ask the question a little bit different. In view of a, a smaller budget, are you thinking about any hiring freezes?
No, I'm not, and let me help you with that a little bit. We are very, very short-staffed right now. In the summer months, we're busy. And we spend a fair amount on overtime. If I don't get our staffing levels up again, those overtime numbers are going up. I, I have to have cops out on the beat. And right now, when I started here in 2011, I had 93 officers. Right now, I'm down to 82, but all intents and purposes with injuries and, and medical conditions and other things. I'm down to 78, 78 working officers. When I started, I had 93. So you can see the problem. And, you know, if we could, one, summer's our primary season, so I'm trying to get our numbers up as best I can to offset some of those, what I know is our expensive times of the year. And then, two, is we need our staffing levels up. If not, certainly you save on the personnel cost, but if you thought our overtime was bad before, it's gonna really go up if I can't get my staffing levels up.
Spoken like a good chief of police should speak. By the way, I was with the chief today in Worcester, Mr. President, and he did a phenomenal job on a, a panel of a conference by DMH in law enforcement, and the importance of what, you know, I think the Holyoke Police Department and policy was the chief's area to talk about, and what it means, I think, to, it was just a statewide group that was quite impressive, and, and our chief was there. Did a great job, chief. When you started, we had taxable revenue from the Mt. Town coal plant, personnel equipment of the plant itself, that, that revenue was around $48 million, $50 million. That's gone. And that means that's less money for us to tax. We've hit the ceiling. It's drying up. If some of these grants don't come in, some of these numbers here are not gonna have any monies to pay for it. And that's the reason I asked you that question. You, in response to what we need in terms of public safety, I'm with you, and I will fight to find the money, and to find whatever we, revenue, whatever sources we can get together to provide that public safety service. But we have to be realistic at the same time, and understand what this budget means, for no other reason, because in 1990, fiscal 1992, we did a battle for five years. And we literally, when the budget came to us, a third of the police department was being laid off, because there was no attrition over the two or three years before that, because there was no addressing of the money drying up. And I just hope we're not going in the same direction again. When we, when the mayor appointed Bellamy as the auditor, I asked him a question. You know, are the numbers that you're gonna give the mayor the same numbers he's gonna give us? And when the, when the department heads come in here, we all need to be on the same page. There, there are tough times. I, for one, will fight to get through them with you, but we can't do it if we can't see everything, you know, transparent throughout the year. The, and I'm not saying you did anything intentionally, not to, you know, not to be transparent, but I'm just trying to shed light on what we're trying to, to accomplish here. The, the buybacks, what type of notice does, does an officer or an employee of the police department have to give before they retire?
Traditionally, I think it's, I'm not 100% sure, I think it's 30 or 90 days. Anybody in the audience know that for a fact? 90.
Okay, so there's no way to predict next month, someone could come up and tell you, "I'm going in 30 days," and we're at the end of...
90, 90 days.
90 days. But you wouldn't know it, it'll be part of your next, it'll be part of the budget that we're looking at right now, but you have no way of knowing it if they tell you July 1.
Well, you, you can forecast who is eligible, and then we will politely go talk to them and say, "Hey, what do you think you're doing next year?" To give us an idea, so I can put a number in here that comes back to you that, whatever that particular number is, we think this is what it's gonna be, based on conversations with our employees. That's always subject to change. You know, somebody could decide, "No, I'm gonna stick it out, I'm gonna stick, stay in policing a little bit longer, I'm having a great time, it's a great time to be a police officer in this country." Obviously, I'm being a little facetious. Or somebody could go, "You know, I, I told you last year I wasn't gonna go, but I'm eligible now, something's up in my family life, so I'm gonna retire." And then I'd have to come back and ask at that point. But what I try to provide in these buybacks is what we believe is gonna go next year, based on our conversations with our employees.
Predicting overtime, is there a formula you use, or is it historical that you just try to, to look at? Or do you take in consideration, you know, the, the number of patrol officers you're down?
There's not an exact formula to it. We do try to keep staffing out on the street. At the moment, staffing is seven cars plus a man inside the house from 12 noon to 4:00 AM. At 4:00 AM to 12 noon, it's a little bit wired, 4:00 AM, we drop down a car, again, trying to save a little bit of money. You know, I know my predecessor here, at one point, tried to staff eight cars out on the road. When I first got here, I would've done the same thing, but he couldn't sustain it, and he, you know, he did that before I got here, but I, I understand his rationale for doing it, for the volume of business. And, but I didn't go down that road, because I didn't think we could sustain it.
The court overtime, we have a new district attorney. Have you had the opportunity to talk to, to the DA about being as mindful as possible about the sums of police officers for whatever, you know, motions, trials, bench trials?
I actually have not had that conversation with our new DA. My last conversations with, with the new DA had to deal with gangs and guns. I'm certainly willing to have that conversation again, but I've had it with the previous DA, and, and obviously, you realize, the court cost is a systemic issue throughout the Commonwealth, not just, you need to Holyoke. My guys do a great job, we do 3,100 arrests a year, they're out there working hard. As of yesterday, we were at like 1,600 arrests, which in essence is gonna mean court at some point. I think if you look not too far south from here, a much bigger agency, they're about the same number that we're at, and we're like a third of their size. So my guys are working very hard on that. On top of, you know, we're trying to improve services, sometimes that's going after grants for community policing, sometimes that's going after grants for traffic. We are fortunate enough this year to get a $150,000 traffic grant out there to work on specific intersections and stuff, which is great, and puts more officers out on the street, and that omnipresence, and hopefully, we can lower some of the crime and the accidents. But an end result of that, you know, is, yeah, here's the money, there's no matching funds, but my officers will make arrests, and then they'll end up in court, and then the city will have to make that expenditure.
If you could, you're just, because he's, he's a new DA, for no other reason, and hopefully, we'll hear it from chiefs throughout the county, you know, that, you know, we, we just hope that he works with us in terms of court overtime. And Chief, believe me, I, I, working in the trial court, I hear a day in and a day out from, from defense attorneys and prosecutors, that Holyoke police officers are, are always, you know, well-respected when they take the stand, especially in the, the bigger trials down in Superior Court. But they're, they're well-known for, for being able to testify and to, to get the job done, because the job they did on the streets was, was top-shelf and, and done correctly. And I, I guess that might be attributed to the education of our police force, but thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thanks. Actually, my first question is for you. A lot of the numbers you were quoting were not numbers that I'm seeing in the budget. Are you looking at like through May 30th or something, summary expenses?
Right.
And does that include all transfers into that line?
Right. So what I'm giving you is, when I said that this was the new revised budgets, these were the actual numbers, is we had how much money we started the year, and then the chief transferred more money into those lines, for whatever reason he felt that was necessary. So what I, when I would say, for example, just as a for example, sick leave buyback, 369, 698, right? If you go to that line to start the year, the city council only appropriated 259, but he transferred in 110,000 into that.
So it's budget plus transfers, it's not an actual through some time point in the year?
Exactly. So that, and so, and then, if you wanna know, like, for example, that was expended, right? Because I have another line that says, "How much is the available budget, and how much was expended?" So if you look at that, 96% of that account was expended through, in this case, it was April 30th.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Well, it's just, it's kinda confusing, because we don't have those figures in front of us.
If you, yeah, remember my friendly advice from yesterday? This budget report that the auditor produces, really helpful, especially for some of these big departments that have lots of transfers. HEDIC has almost no transfers, they do almost none. This department does lots, there's lots of movement going on between the personnel and the expense lines. So if you really wanna know how much was actually expended or budgeted, you need to know what the chief made for decisions throughout the fiscal year. And that's what this little cheat sheet gives me.
Gotcha. Chief, just help me understand a couple of numbers. So you said a couple of years ago, there were, you had 93 officers?
That's correct.
And now you're down to 82, of which 78 are actually on the job because of sick time or whatever?
Correct.
Was that 93, 93 on the job, or 93 minus some sick officers, blah, blah, blah? So the number, the physical number on the street is lower than that, it's...
The, the, on the street, I gotta figure it was probably about 90.
Okay, so down a few?
Yeah.
Same, same sort of deal?
Because we, we always have, unfortunately, someone injured.
Sure, I mean, it's, it's part of life. And then, if I understand, you said you're, you're expecting for retirements, and your buybacks are based on what those individual retirees who have self-projected they're probably retiring, what they've accrued, and what the buybacks will be for them individually, which is why it might look different from some other years, same number of people, but they have different number of years of seniority, or whatever else. And then, last question on that, so you're hiring eight new ones this year, you've got them in training now?
No, we're, I have 20 reserves that are in various stages of training.
Yeah.
Four of them have actually completed their training and can work, the others are at different stages. We're about to hire, my current budget year, I'm budgeted for 90 officers. My hope is at the end of this budget process, that you will budget me for at least 90 officers. My goal is to hire, because I'm at 82, get it up to 90. The academy doesn't start till August. I would be hiring in the, we've requested a list from Silver Service, the list that provided that we're gonna hiring are part of my 20 reserves, so that's gonna knock that down to 12 reserves when we hire them. Of course, I'm gonna turn around and go, "Let me get my reserve numbers back up," because, you know, it's, it's always this game of catch-up, so to speak.
Gotcha. And then, last question, and this is a question I asked totally out of ignorance. I get the special event overtime, like, I can see, okay, there's this event, you need overtime to do it. And I caught through something else, you said that there's a, a seasonality to the demand for police services, and so that generates some overtime too. Are there other reasons why there's regular overtime, beyond spikiness from events and beyond the seasonality issue of...
Contractual obligations, people taking vacation time, I gotta fill the squad cars.
Okay.
And then, and then, people on military duty.
Okay.
I have six, seven officers that are affiliated with the military.
Sure.
That's 17 days off a year. Usually, that's weekends when I'm shortest, because I'm always running a minimum manpower on weekends. And then, of course, depending on your number of injured on duty. This year, January and February, which are traditionally a slow month for us as far as overtime goes, I had, I think January, seven officers out, and one supervisor, then in February, I had seven officers out and three supervisors. So the numbers were up because of that. That, you know, again, you try to project, project trends, you know, I can tell you, crime-wise, you know, it spikes every spring, and our overtime expenses, because most people take time off during the summer, go up at that time.
Okay, and those are the main reasons that covers the bulk of it?
Yes, and, and also, please realize that, you know, if you look at our averages, we get 3.4 homicides a year, we're at two this calendar year. In this budget year, I think we're at three or four, in the budget year, if you go back to last July. A typical homicide, because you're trying to look hard at the numbers, costs me 12.5 in overtime, just to give you an idea.
Sure.
So we try to look at that, you try to look at, you know, you try to predict fatal accidents, I think a fatal accident costs me, you know, and we get half a dozen or so a year, $2,000 in overtime, roughly. You know, a serious accident, I think it's like $1,400 in overtime. Not, you know, you bring people in, but it doesn't get to that far, you know, initially. So you try to look at those numbers and go, "Okay, I know these are occurring." And then you do your best to say, "Can I, can I build what I think's gonna predict, what I predict's gonna happen based on previous years, can I build that into the budget?" Or we try to.
Okay, and just help me one more time. So when you say, like, a fatal accident costs $2,000 in overtime, is that because the officer that caught the accident is now tied up dealing with that, and so somebody else has to backfill a squad car or whatever?
Plus, we have to call people in. Because, you know, you know, if I have a, I only have a few traffic reconstructionists, and if one's working, that's great, if one's not, and then usually, you know, yeah, I get a couple of them in, and you gotta get a supervisor or an expert, you know, it'd be like, it'd be like asking Matt... it'd be like asking Matt, unfortunately here to investigate.
Gotcha. So it's because you need specialized resources for those kinds of...
A homicide. He's not a homicide detective.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Uh, Counsel Valentin?
Thank you. Um, good evening, Chief. I have a couple of questions. Um, and, you know, for folks watching at home and wondering, why, why do we have so many questions? Yeah, the Police Department budget is twenty percent of the city budget, so, um, I think that explains a little bit about why we have so many questions. Um, my first question is regarding community policing. Um, when we looked at the CDBG proposals, um, you had put in a request for fifty thousand dollars for community policing, um, and that was for, um, to conduct walking beat mobilization in four of the city hotspot areas. That was, um, you, you originally requested fifty, um, the office for, um, uh, OCD suggested twenty-five, the advisory group suggested twenty-five, the mayor suggested zero, and then, um, at our committee meeting, uh, for DGNR, um, I actually made a motion to give you ten thousand dollars towards that to try to focus on those summer months that you were talking about. Um, and my colleagues on the, on that committee, um, supported that, and that's, I believe what the final number was. Correct, Counselor Bartley?
That's correct.
Was it ten? Okay. Um, is that reflected anywhere specifically in the budget, or is it just, uh, inserted into the staff lines in general?
That's not reflected anywhere in the budget. Um, I mean, I just got, I think, written notice like two or three days ago-
Okay.
-that the ten thousand dollars is going to be made available.
I mean, I know it's, I know it's pennies compared to the numbers we're talking about, but I'm just wondering, where is it in here?
Well, I, I appreciate your support. That's not here.
Okay.
And I wouldn't defund ten thousand dollars. That's to do more than what we currently do.
Yep.
You know, that's to put a, a couple of officers walking a beat, getting to know the neighbors, you know, several times a week at four-hour blocks. Last year, the old Holyoke Development Corp helped fund some of this. Tremendous return on that type of investment.
Yep.
Uh, and, uh, you know, when I'm running minimum manpower, it's tough for me to put a couple of guys walking a beat. That enables us to do that.
So, I guess my question becomes, if, if there's no, um, specific line for community policing, if it's just kind of all meshed in, um, we just know that because you're getting this ten thousand, you'll just have some additional staffing in, in those summer months. I mean, we're proposing summer months, you, you use it whenever you want, but, um, so that was my first question about where that's kind of shown. The other one is, um, construction details. Um, can you kind of guide me a little bit through that in terms of, you know, how does that work? Why does it have to be HPD? Are, are there any other options? I mean, I, I'm, several of my colleagues have talked about ignorance on certain topics. Construction, construction detail is a complete ignorance topic for me. Um, but I'm just, in my mind, right, I work at Holyoke Community College, I'm driving to work every day, and I see several officers on those, um, in, in, in route, and I'm thinking, is this, you know, is this the best place for this manpower? And I don't know if there's union regulations that it has to be them, or how it works. So if you could just kind of break that down for me, um, in terms of construction detail, and why those officers need to be there and not elsewhere?
Um, the, the reality, and I'm probably not the best first in this, because again, I'm, I'm a little, from Connecticut, but, uh, it's not unique to Massachusetts. Connecticut does the same basic thing. But in Massachusetts, if you're disrupting the road and the traffic, generally speaking, the construction company is required to hire someone, generally. Um, and when you look at X number of officers, whatever it is, direct, directing traffic on a construction job, there's a, uh, there's a big benefit to the city when that happens. And the benefit is, besides the seven cars I got out there now, now I got six more officers out there, uh, capable. They don't normally respond to calls for service, but I think it was last year or two years ago, I had one of my officers actually chase down a man with a gun off of a detail. So there is value to that. Um, Matt, I don't know if you can expand any more than...
Evening, everyone. Um, pertaining to the details, uh, it's not a budget item. Uh, the details are paid by the construction companies or whoever's doing the work. Ideally, we have a slush fund. I can't recall the number on the fund right now. But, uh, the money is there where, when the officer works, the officer, in the next pay period, is paid. Uh, the company is then billed through our payroll, who'll be Kate McCoy, and that money is then replaced into that slush fund. So when it comes to, uh, construction jobs, uh, those kind of detail, or details as we call them, it, it doesn't affect the city budget or our budget at all. It's a...
So it's not that you're pulling an officer from one place to put them into a construction detail, and then you have to pay somebody overtime to cover-
Correct.
-wherever that officer was?
Uh, actually, how it works is, um, oh, um, shift coverage overrides details.
Okay.
So, uh, there have been, uh, several occasions where we've taken people away from details and, uh, to cover, you know, shifts or, uh, an emergency that happened like several years ago, when, uh, I think it was the tanker came off of three ninety-one and, uh, exploded. Uh, people were pulled from all over for that. Uh, just an example for that.
Yeah, that's helpful, because I, like I said, when, when we're just driving around and we see an officer, we don't know if they're being pulled from somewhere else, and does that then come into overtime and all these other pieces, uh, in terms of coverage? My last question, uh, that I can think of right now, is regarding the, uh, police cruisers. We were told recently that three were ordered with some money that was found. I think that was the phrase that we were told. Um, and as Kevin was talking about some of these transfers, could you just let us know kind of where this money came from and, and what the process is for the rest? Because I think what we were told, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that three have been ordered, and like three more are on the way, and the, the chief found some money for this, and there's some other money that was, I mean, found money is great. I just think it, it would be helpful to kind of have an idea, as we're talking about these figures, where the money was found, found.
Um, I would love to tell you I found the money for three cars in my current year of operating budget. I did not. Uh, I, the money that came for the three cars that we have ordered, I don't know what budget that came out of, other than I was told to go ahead and order them. As far as I know, it's, it's not out of my budget. I don't know if Bellamy's aware where those funds are coming from. I, I don't know, and maybe I may be catching him short with that question. The money that got approved for me to go purchase those three, where is that, where is that money coming from?
It's, uh, it's on, never quite sure. It's, it's in a fund. It's not in, it's not in your operating budget. It's, and I can't remember the, the, the name of the fund. Uh, but it was a fund from selling real estate, is all I can tell you, which is, uh, you're, we're allowed to use to spend on capital projects, which this is.
Right. And then I, and then I was also informed that, uh, uh, there's going to be, uh, like, a, a, a real capital expenditure budget in the next fiscal year that we're rolling into, as opposed to, everybody comes back and asks for free cash. We don't really have a capital expenditure budget. And with that, I would be able to buy three more cars.
Yeah, but just so we're clear, the re, the capital budget that is submitted is informational only. It has to identify a funding source. It doesn't do that. Just so you know. Yeah, the mayor submitted that. He also submitted a, um, stabilization policy. Those are informational only. Council doesn't vote on those. Those have to come in as, you know, either going to be free cash, stabilization, bonding. There has to be some actual transfer in order for you to actually get those dollars. That's just the mayor saying, I've looked at all these requests, and it looks like he took in a bunch of requests from people for capital, uh, over the next five years, you know, sort of the, everybody's wish list, and this is what he allocated it for. But he hasn't identified a one dollar yet of funding for any of it. Just so, just so we're clear on that. Um, okay, are you also, Counsel Valentin?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm glad that the cruisers are getting paid for, because I was a little concerned about not knowing where the money was coming from. Thank you.
Great. Um, Counsel Bartley?
Oh, okay. Yeah, Bellamy? Bellamy, could you step to the mic, please?
Sure.
Thank you. All right, you didn't know? Um, ju, just, because I'm still not clear without the, the police cruiser funds are coming from. So would you just explain the fund?
There is a fund, and I...
But where is it on my budget?
You'll get us some documentation on that.
Again, funds are not in the budget. For the, this is the budget for the general fund. There are also funds set up for every grant that, that the, the council accepts. For example, there are at least two PSAP grants. We were talking about those earlier. It wasn't just one. There's kind of one every year, and every year, we set up a separate fund for that, for the grant, so that the income can go in one place and the, and the expenses go in. So we have, the city has actually hundreds of funds, many of them now defunct, but because some of them are scholarships, some of them are old, uh, construction projects, but lots and lots of funds. And so, and they're all separate from the general fund, and they're count, they're accounted for separately.
I appreciate that.
Okay, so, so for the police cars, there is a fund for the receipt of the proceeds of selling real estate. And there was a, there was a, of real estate?
Is it like from the auctions that we...
Yeah, I, I think so. I really don't know. The money was sitting in the fund. I don't know exactly where it came from, but there was a balance of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in there.
What fund?
It's called, uh, pits.
Well, it, it's never been appropriated by the city council to spend.
Uh, I don't think it has to be appropriated by the city council to spend. I think...
I think everything has to be appropriated by the city council, initiated through the mayor to spend, whether it's the budget process, a grant coming in. You don't spend money you don't have approval for.
No, I think the purpose of the, that's the, the, the purpose of the fund is to use it for these, for whatever it is.
Have we ever set up a fund for real estate?
How about, let's do one better.
Real estate sales go back into the general budget.
And the other thing, and, and to Joe's point also is, let's just say, arguendo, you got some money and you put it in this fund.
Correct.
You can't spend it on police cars without our approval anyways, because you can't take dollars from that account and then spend them for some purpose that, I mean, those...
If that's what the purpose of the fund is, you can do that. And that is what, that's the express purpose of the fund.
Is to purchase police cars?
No, it's to per, to, uh, to use the fund for capital expenditures. I mean, that's what the, I looked up the law, and that is what it said. For anything that, anything, the, the actual words are anything that you could bond for, the money may be spent on.
So we just have to have this one fund that's broad...
And so when the fund was set up, and the city council said, yes, you can spend this money, and this fund's been around for a long, long time.
All right, so, so please give us a copy of that, of all the information on that, the account number, the balance, and say, for the last year, any, any, um, expenses and revenues in it, because we, we'll-
Yeah.
-we'll examine that.
Sure.
And then adopt policies in accordance with what needs to be done, because we don't want people spending any money, you know, especially over a certain threshold, without our okay, right? It's, you know, at a minimum. I, in fact, I think there's, uh, I think there's in the charter, right? Appropriations over two hundred dollars, I think is the thing. It requires a vote of the council, but, all right. Um, Counsel Bartley had the floor, though.
I appreciate, thank, that's all, no, it's, that's a helpful, help on all quarters is appreciated. Um, okay, so, um, there's that. And, and Chief, and, and not to throw anybody in the bus, but it, it was just conveyed to us at our prior budget hearing that you, the chief, found the money. So that's how that, that's how that came up, Chief, and I, and I'm just, I'm just going to end it there. Um, uh, Chief, just to Counsel McGivern's earlier point, um, regarding Mr., uh, uh, Glooney, um, the DA, I, I'll, I'll file an order to have him come to, um, to city council, probably in the fall, Chief, and, and I'll notify you well, well in advance to that date, and your participation, and Captain would be, uh, anybody else would be more than welcome, and we can talk about court appearances and anything else you want to talk about. So, uh, and we'll, we'll do that in the fall at some point, okay, Chief? And, and the DA's already confirmed that he would cooperate with that, so.
Okay.
Um, I, I just want to, um, reference just a couple small things. You mentioned thirty-one hundred arrests a year. Uh, Chief, do you have the, the data on number of traffic tickets and the, the number, the amount of revenue generated from traffic tickets? And you just put me out there? And then I was also, also follow up with that with code violations from, from your, your, your code enforcement officer.
So, you, you got a, a report on the, um, on the budget that you have as, on revenues that the department took in?
Yes, sir.
Um, I can tell you, for the calendar year of, uh, two thousand and fourteen, um, we had, uh, sixty-three hundred and five traffic stops. Of that, uh, two thousand eight hundred and seventy-five, uh, citations were written. Um, I have some numbers for, uh, fines that were generated, uh, citation fines, um, uh, in the neighborhood of a hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars, uh, I believe of that. Depending on how the ticket is written, only a portion of it comes back to the city. Uh...
What?
If you write a state traffic ticket as opposed to a city ordinance, there's a difference about what comes back to the city eventually. And I have to be careful here. We cannot, the Police Department cannot be revenue-generated business.
Not intentionally, at least.
Well, go take a look down at what happened down in, um, Ferguson. One of the underlying causes of Ferguson in the, in the underlying areas is, the officers there, in not just Ferguson, the, the communities, they have a culture down there of balancing the city budget, or helping fund the city budget based on writing tickets. But anyways, um, but as far as what our code enforcement officer has written, I don't have a report for you to give on that. I haven't gathered that data.
Okay, yeah, and I, I understand your, your, your argument, uh, with, uh, you're making sure the shifts are properly covered, but I, I can't begin to express my disappointment in losing Officer Rivera, um, who we, in the short time he was in the code enforcement officer, what a outstanding individual he is. And...
And, and I don't disagree with you. He is an outstanding individual. He does a great job. Uh, and I get my staffing back up. I get through the, the summer months, you know. Again, he's not out of there completely. It's more of like a part-time gig. When we have enough staffing, he can go do that. I get through the summer ma, months, which is traditionally my worst overtime. If I can get my staffing levels back up, we can look at shifting them back. But again, part of it's money, you know, and, 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 I guess, trying to stop some of the hemorrhage.
Right, I, I get that it's all money, but, uh, ju, because I just want, I had a similar question. So just, um, because you often have on, on real detailed jobs, you also often have auxiliary police officers. So how, how does, how is it that sometimes auxiliary officers get, get those assignments as opposed to regular patrolmen?
Uh, when the, uh, regular patrolmen don't want the jobs and we can't fill it.
Okay, and so, if that's the case, then when a regular patrolman does want it, um, he, he's, he's going to get it, and that's, whether, whether or not, I mean, I heard Captain Moriarty, um, say that, you know, shift coverage overrides details. Um, so is that, i- is that a, a truism? Is that, is that, is that static? Is that, what, how does that work? I mean, if, if we have officers on, on shift details, d- does that impact our overtime, uh, Chief? Uh, and if so, to what extent?
I'm not sure I follow you, Counselor.
Well, I, I mean, if you don't have sufficient force, uh, for the regular shifts, I, I'm assuming you have to use overtime, and I'm, and I'm suggesting to you that our officers on detail road jobs, if they were not on detail road jobs, would they be, uh, available for a regular straight-time shift?
No, it's the, they're, when they're working detail road jobs, that's their off time.
That's their off time. Okay, that, that, that's a, that's a, that's a, okay, that's, that's what I was trying to, trying to get. Yes, okay. So I, I, I thought that was the answer, but I, I, I just wanted to hear you say it. Okay, and, and that's, and, and is that, is that not true, or is that different from court appearance time? Because that, that's one I really don't, because I really don't practice on the criminal, uh, courts, uh, virtually never, so.
If, if I'm a day shift guy, and I make an arrest, and tomorrow's my workday, and I got to go to court, I go to court on straight time. If I work a different shift, or I'm a day shift guy, and tomorrow's my day off, and I have to go to court, then the city has to pay him overtime. So, when you look at, I have three shifts. If, if a midnight guy makes an arrest, if a four to twelve officer makes an arrest, if and when they go to court, we're paying him overtime.
Okay, I helped, that helped me. Uh, just, just as far as, um, the superior officers, uh, how, so there are one chief, four captains, eight lieutenants, fifteen sergeants. Um, superior officers or captains, uh, how many workdays out of the four?
All of them do.
Okay. Uh, superior officers, uh, lieutenants, how many workdays?
Uh, one, two, three. I have a, the day shift CO. I have, uh, I'm sorry, I have the day shift CO, it's two, and I have a internal affairs lieutenant.
And sergeants?
On days?
Please.
Patrol's got, uh, four assigned to it, and then I have a sergeant- Patrol's got, uh, four assigned to it, and then I have a sergeant, uh, assigned to training, and a sergeant assigned to, uh, pistol permits and, uh, de- details, and I have another sergeant, uh, uh, that oversees records and, and IT in our computers.
So seven. I heard four plus three others, that's what I heard.
I heard four plus four others.
Was it s-
All right, so, bear with me. You got the four that are on the patrol, plus I got a training sergeant, plus I got a IT record sergeant, plus I got a detailed sergeant. Seven.
Is that, and which one's the gun permit? Is that in there too?
Yeah, he's the detail permit guy.
So seven.
So sev- seven of the fifteen sergeants, uh, three of the eight lieutenants, and four of the four captains. Is that correct, uh, Chief?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, and I really appreciate all, all your frankness and cooperation, as always, Chief. You know, you're always, you know, spot on, so I do appreciate it. Um, okay, um, thank you.
All right, uh, next up was Gordon.
Thanks. Um, Chief, getting back to, uh, I think it was Josie actually asked the original question about the, um, construction details. So if somebody's on construction detail, it's on their off time anyway, so it's not impacting the hours that they're working or getting paid or anything else. But the construction, how do they get paid? Are they paid through the department?
Yeah, they're paid through the city.
And is that expense in here somewhere?
No.
Because it's reimbursed by the construction company?
Correct.
But if I recall correctly, that we have some issues with getting reimbursed by construction companies?
Correct, and if you, if you, uh, and when I first got here a few years ago, this was a big issue. And, uh, Council President Jordan and I had a number of discussions on this. And we aggressively go after, uh, I guess I would say the late billers, and we dropped that number significantly. What the ba, what the current balance is, I don't know, but I, I gotta think we'd probably bill out fifty thousand a month in detail work.
Cool. It would be helpful to see the expense and the, and the revenue reflected on here. I know it's just informational, because it's not actually running through the budget, but for next year or whatever, it would be helpful to have that on here. Bellamy, can I borrow you again for a second?
Sure.
Thanks.
Bellamy, it might be helpful to give Council Alexander and some of the others a copy of the fund, that fund. Um, I think, you know, the-
Yeah, absolutely.
The road job fund report, say for the last twelve months, if you could get us that.
Yeah, that'd be great. Um, my question though is a little bit more general. So when, when we, when the council votes to accept a fund, and we use the same boilerplate language, I think, every single time, it says, you know, uh, to account for the revenues and expenditures within the fund, and the fund has a purpose.
Correct.
And so there is no vote by the city council beyond accepting that we're setting up the fund for anything that conforms to the purpose of the fund, right?
Whether with the receipt of revenue or the expenditure of, of-
Within the purpose of that fund as it's defined by the defining law of the fund. So you're saying this real estate, I just want to be clear on this, this is a real estate fund that was set up years ago to receive some revenue from a real estate sale or something?
Something like that, yes.
Whose purpose was then to be spent on any capital expense that essentially the mayor decided to spend it on?
Apparently, yeah, I mean, there's a whole series of things that could be spent on, but one is this, anything you can bond for.
Kind of a, a loose and fluffy fund. Um, is it possible-
Exactly, because that's part of the mass general law. It's not that we wrote it, or you wrote it, it's just, that's what the law is.
Right. Is it possible to get a list of all of the active funds, the funds that have anything in them, uh, with a one-liner of the purpose of the fund and what the current balance is? Is that something that can be generated out of the treasurer's office, somebody in the city? Does somebody know that? I don't mean the second, I mean in general, is that data available?
It's, yes, it's, it's, yes, because, uh, for example, the auditors and I have been going through, through all the funds, because we want to clea, clear out the, the auditors are pushing us to clear out all the balances of funds that, you know, were kind of defunct, and there's just some leftover money, and they say, you've gotta clear this out and get rid of it, which means move it to the general fund.
Sure, which would require a vote of us, I assume, anyway, right, to close out that? Wouldn't we have to vote that then? Because there's no law being expended on the purpose of the fund?
No, it's just, it's just leftover, and so we, no, it's just an automatic move it to the general fund.
Okay, so you can close-
So we need to close out the funds, and the auditors have been pushing-
And who decides when it's just leftover?
Uh, because a lot of the funds have an, end dates to them.
Gotcha.
So you can't receive any more money after thus and such a date, and, or spend anymore.
Okay, well, I'm only speaking for myself, but I'm probably speaking for more than myself. It could be very interesting to be able to see, uh, some greater visibility into the number of funds and the balances in them that are floating around out there.
Fine.
Thank you.
Uh, Council Lisi.
Thank you. Uh, Chief, Captain, thanks for coming down. I think, I just want to, um, touch on these points related to the traffic and construction details one more time, because I think we're missing, um, a variable here. Um, so if an officer is not on shift duty, then they become eligible for traffic construction detail, correct?
Correct.
So if they are working their normal number of shifts in a week, and the traffic detail, construction detail, they would likely then start to bleed over into an overtime expenditure. Is that, is that correct?
Uh, the only time that would bleed over to an overtime expenditure would be, um, if I took a vacation day to work, a traffic detail, which, um, I can't imagine happens a lot, but even my old agency, you could do that. You could take a vacation day and go work a traffic detail.
So, um, the normal number of, like, shifts worked in a week don't constitute a full-time week, or is it because of-
My patrol office works a four and two schedule, four days on, two days off. Uh, so when they have their time off, whether it be on their day off, or an extension of their workday, let's say I just get finished third shift, I'm getting off at eight o'clock in the morning, or seven o'clock in the morning, and a road job comes up, I can stand on my feet all day and work the road job, and then go home, get eight hours sleep, and come back in.
So they're still considered, um, it wouldn't be considered overtime if it happened on one of their four days working? It would happen if they, if it happened on one of the two days not working?
I don't consider it overtime, it's, it's a different rate of pay. A detail, we call it a detail. It's a construction job, or it's working some, it's working some particular establishment, somebody's hiring, it's a detail rate.
It's a flat forty, right?
Correct.
But how does that affect their, their regular work schedule, or does it not at all? Because I, I mean, if I-
Generally, it doesn't, 'cause it's, it's in addition. They're, they're chasing details for, I don't know, pay for a boat, or pay for a vacation, or whatever the case may be. Do you know what I mean?
It's almost like having a second job. It doesn't, it doesn't count as plus on top of your normal job. It's just another job you have and you get paid another rate for.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so there's a different billing system, different, the hours don't conflate with one another, they're, they're held separately.
And what Matt was trying to explain earlier was, if there is a conflict, and we have an emergency, the city and regular patrol staffing always takes precedent over a detail.
Okay, um, and then secondly, I think, um, in years past, um, we've had conversations with both, um, police and fire about, um, the way that vacation days are being allocated, um, because, a- as you said, summer is the busier time of, of the year. Um, I'm sure part of the busyness comes from just the increased activity and people outside. Um, part of the, uh, busyness also comes from people wanting to take their vacations in the summer when the weather's nicer. So, um, have you ta, been able to take any steps to stagger these vacations and, and ensure that we're able to have, um, the maximum staffing possible, so we're not going into that overtime expenditure?
I'm bound by the collective bargaining agreements, and at any given day, uh, three patrol officers, if they ask for a vacation day, they get it. Uh, on Saturdays, that number can double, because they're, the language in the contract allows on Saturdays, up to six could take the day. So I, I'm bound by those agreements.
So people can request their vacation time whenever they like, and you have to say yes up until the third person takes vacation on that day?
Correct.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to get an understanding of how that's working. Thank you.
Okay. Um, any other additional questions that we have on page eighteen?
Can I, can I just follow up on that real quick?
Yep.
So Chief, so if you're down, say, five officers or whatever, for whatever reason, because we didn't fund the position, or because somebody's out sick, uh, you're still contractually obligated to three of them being able to take the day off, and that's one of the drivers of the overtime on the remaining people?
Yes, uh, contractually, I'm always obligated to. Now, if you've got an emergency, that's different. You, you know, uh, tanker truck, well, you know, you know, whatever, that, that's-
Under normal business, I understand.
But under normal course of business, I'm absolutely obligated to provide them with that.
Regardless of whether you're down officers or not?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Chief, um, repair and maintenance office equipment, I see that, uh, that was at eleven thousand this year. Are you anticipating some increase as to why that needs to go to fourteen? It's at the very bottom line of page eighteen.
Yeah, hang on, let me just, uh, flip over my notes. Um, our, our expenditures have gone up over the past several years in that item. Uh, you know, and unfortunately, everything seems to go up. Uh, United Business Machine, uh, uh, communications radios, um, the reason I ask for more money is because our expenses are going up.
Okay, uh, let's see here. This would be... You transferred three thousand dollars. We gave you fourteen thousand this past year. You transferred three thousand dollars out, leaving eleven. Why shouldn't we give you eleven again? Or let me say this, why shouldn't we give you the eleven that you wanted? We gave you fourteen last year, you took three of it for other purposes.
Right.
So why shouldn't I just give you eleven again?
Well, again, you know, it's kind of like a, a checks and balances. You're trying to keep me, you know, I'll give you eleven, or I'll give you fourteen, but just spend that. But sometimes other accounts are underfunded, and we gotta move money around to cover them, and that's the same thing here. You know, sometimes I gotta transfer money to cover something else, an unanticipated expense, or something maybe we didn't budget appropriately for, and another line item, and we move money over to that to do that.
Council made no cuts in your budget, FY fifteen?
You didn't. I assume the mayor did, though, before he came to you.
Yeah, well...
And I thought I got cut for-
That's your boss, you know, that's what you're, um...
Yeah, I know.
He says that's all he wants you to have. Shouldn't I agree with him?
Well, he's not gonna give me everything I asked for, any more than you're gonna give me everything I asked for.
All I'm asking is, should I give you what you've asked for? You, you, you had eleven, should I give you eleven again, as opposed to fourteen?
The mayor submitted fourteen. I can certainly utilize fourteen.
Okay, I think, thank you. Got you for that answer. Uh, page nineteen, uh, moving right along on that, just to, should keep, wanna keep things moving here. Um, let's take a peek, uh, repair and maintenance of motor vehicles. We budgeted fifty-three thousand dollars this current fiscal year, FY fifteen. You transferred out six thousand dollars to make it forty-seven thousand dollars. It's now proposed at sixty. Is that just, uh, you know, case we need it for something else, or should we give you forty-seven, or should we give you sixty, or some number in between?
I think I need the sixty. The expense of our cars are going up. At different times of the year, depending on what I have, I have to move money around, whether I move six thousand out. You'll also take a look at that. I believe I came in and asked for twenty-five thousand dollars to be put back into that account.
But didn't you say at the beginning that you had an extra three hundred thousand dollars that you turned back?
Not turning that back in, that'll be in next year's free cash.
Right, so my point is, even though you're doing all the shifts around, there's still three hundred at the bottom of the bucket that popped out.
That's three hundred and eight thousand that, um, uh-
We're glad to have it, but-
It is old grant money that we were trying to, remember, when I came in here, uh, and I inherited the grants and what had been done in that office, and people had come and left, it was a mess. So we tried to close out accounts, instead of having revolving accounts, establish a new fund every time we get a new grant, come before the city council, and some of this is, we're just trying to clean up some old stuff. So, but that three hundred and eight thousand wasn't mine to spend willy-nilly on cars.
No, I understand that, but let's just, just staying with the repair and maintenance vehicles, right? We gave you fifty-three. You said you didn't need it, 'cause you took out six, so then it went to forty-seven. That was what you transferred out. So now I have a request from the same gentleman that took six out and said you only needed forty-seven. I now have you saying, I need sixty.
Right.
For what you've been doing at forty-seven, so why thirteen more?
But we put twenty-five back in, you understand that, right?
Not according to this, not in that line.
Well, according to my notes, we put, I came in and I asked you for twenty-five thousand dollars.
When did that happen?
A month ago. Remember, I came in for all these budget requests? Traditionally, when I come in, I come in for overtime and gas, right?
Right.
But this year, there are line items in the expense side of the house that I came back and asked money for. That was one of them.
All right, well, this is as of May first, so maybe it happened after that.
Well, I, you know-
That's the most recent report.
Right. You know, you know, I don't know the last time I was in here, but I was in here specifically over expense items and the overtime.
And repair and maintenance of vehicles, you said?
It was twenty-five thousand transferred in.
Okay. Drug testing. That was a bit, a little bit in the news type story. I see that, um, you have a new line here for twenty-five thousand of drug testing. Want to tell us a little bit about that?
Sure. Um, sorry, I was just trying to... Yeah, I, I, I've just, on the previous issue, I am finding that I was in here for the twenty-five thousand, specific for that account, but, okay. Uh, drug testing.
Sure, I'll take your word for that, for that one.
Um, uh, yeah, okay, uh, drug testing. Um, issues have arisen in the past, uh, with, uh, an employee and, and, uh, their behavior. That employer is no longer with us. I have, uh, a hundred and ten sworn officers that work hard every day, but I think it's important for the public to understand that the, uh, the police department doesn't have any substance abuse issues. Uh, and, and, you know, we have armed officers out there enforcing the law, uh, and I think it's important that we have a drug-free work environment.
So for the twenty-five grand, what are you proposing? That you're gonna have everybody take a drug test?
That is correct.
Okay.
Please realize, um-
Oh, that's what, all sworn officers? How about staff or just officers?
That's just sworn officers. We, we went, we, we crunched the numbers, it'd be about twenty-five thousand dollars.
Not to be facetious, but that's the senior leadership, including yourself, everybody?
Myself included, absolutely. I'll be the first one in line.
No exclusions.
I'll be the first one in line.
Good.
Uh, the only other thing that, I want to point out on that is, depending on how we do this, there's an additional, which isn't in front of you, fifteen thousand dollar expenditure, expenditure on top of that twenty-five. It's gonna cost me in overtime to get it done. I just want you to be aware of it.
Interesting. Um, and is this something random, uh, that's gonna be like an ongoing? Is this a new policy or program that's gonna be, or on an as-needed basis type of situation, or as people suspect?
It's in the collective bargaining agreement right now.
What does that say?
Uh, it says if you test, you can test on reasonable suspicion.
Okay.
Uh, reasonable suspicion would be like your typical OUI attribute somebody would display.
Mm-hmm.
Short of that, you can, you, without reasonable suspicion, you can test, but if you test one, you must test all.
So, so your, your game plan is you're gonna test everybody, and then as needed with reasonable suspicion thereafter?
I always can do re, with reasonable suspicion, but the way it's, uh, defined, it's a, um, uh, you know, if you get a tip, that's not reasonable suspicion.
Okay, all right.
So, uh, and-
But that's what this money's for?
Yes.
Okay. All right, um, wanted to ask you about, uh, medical, um, costs, line fifty-three to ten. Um, there was a, quite a sum of money transferred out of there. Um, you ultimately only left twenty-nine hundred dollars in this account. The city council gave you ten thousand dollars. The current fiscal year, you transferred out seventy-one hundred, so there's, it was twenty-nine hundred left, and, um, now you're asking for eighteen thousand four hundred. Can you just explain?
Sure.
Why, how we got from twenty-nine hundred to eighteen-four?
Sure. Um, if you, when we do new hires, we have to do certain things when we hire. We have to do psychological, have to do, uh, medical, have to do what's called a PAT test, a physical agility training test. So we are in the process of hiring eight full-timers. Even though they're reserves, there's some tests I have to repeat for the academy. Uh, I don't have to repeat, uh, the psychological, but they have to get another medical, which is five hundred dollars, uh, and then they have to get, uh, um, another PAT, which is a hundred and fifty to a whack. So, uh, the PAT for eight full-timers is twelve hundred dollars. So, uh, the PAT for eight full-timers is twelve hundred dollars. Bear with me. When I, uh, I, I told you earlier, you know, we're gonna lose eight reserves, because we're gonna hire eight reserves full-timer. By city charter, I'm authorized to go up to twenty-three. To get up to that number, I would hire eleven more reserves to put them through the PAT. That's another sixteen hundred and fifty dollars, if I hire the eleven more reserves. Then I have to do the medical for the eight full-timers I'm hiring. That's five thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. Then I have to do, uh, the medical for the reserves, which is a little bit bigger than that. And then I have to do a psychological for those eleven reserves, at five hundred dollars a whack, which is fifty-five hundred dollars. So, between the full-timers that we're hiring and the reserves I want to hire, the actual number, even though what you're seeing is eighteen fours, is nineteen-five.
Did we not hire anyone this fiscal year?
Uh, we did.
We did?
Yeah.
How'd you pull it off with only twenty-nine hundred dollars?
I'm not sure where the, where my bookkeeper transferred the money from, but we did.
Okay, that just seems like quite a, you know, big jump. Anybody else with questions on page nineteen?
Yep.
Oh, Councilor Graney.
Yeah, Chief, I just, uh, I, I have a question on fifty-three, one ninety. Education and training. You requested sixty thousand. The mayor has allocated twenty-five thousand. Is that related to the police academy expenditures, or, you know, what does the police academy cost us, uh, for that training session?
Sure.
And is this related, related to that education and training, that line item?
Uh, yeah, it is related to the, uh, police academy. Every officer I send to the academy cost me three thousand dollars, just to send an officer to the police academy. If I send a reserve to the police academy, their reserve academy costs me fourteen hundred dollars. So there is an expense. If I have a, if I have a, uh, an officer, and we move him in to become a detective, just the basic courses to be, you know, fingerprinting, photography, interview interrogations, just to get a, a detective at a basic level, I have to spend in the neighborhood of thirty-five hundred dollars in training.
Thank you.
Councilor McGivern?
Chief, on the bottom of our budget, it has for informational purposes, some revenue figures. One line item talks about fines, forfeitures, which I understand, and parking tickets. Can you tell me where police officers write parking tickets, or where they do not write parking tickets? Issue.
And I, and I'm not sure if that parking ticket number is, uh, the employee that also works for the city hall, the parking ticket...
The DPW.
Yeah, I, I think, I think those numbers are combined, to be honest with you.
Well, that's, actually, that's what my question is, really is. Because police officers, I don't believe, issue, on a regular basis, don't issue parking tickets downtown?
Uh, no, that would normally be the DPW parking, or they have the ability to do that, but it would normally be the DPW.
And that person works for the DPW?
That's correct.
And the, the reason I ask is, is it, we should get it segregated if we're gonna be looking at the, uh, the parking decks and the, uh, price, the, uh, the, the monthly fees and parking rates. Thank you.
Plus the, uh, to your point also, the mayor has requested in his request to us that we double all the parking fines, too, so we'll wanna keep track of those. He's counting on it in this budget to, to come up with another hundred thousand. Whether that's an incentive or not, I don't know, but he's estimated that we're gonna collect another hundred thousand in parking fines. Anything else for our police colleagues? No? Alright, thank you so much.
The Councilor, Councilor Jurnan, all councils, I, I appreciate your support tonight. And I look forward to working with you, really, over the next fiscal year on our, uh, challenging budget. I get it. Uh, there's only so many dollars to go around, and it's a tough place to be. But, uh, all of you have been, you may not always agree, but we're, we're all working towards the same goal, and I appreciate the opportunity to work with you.
Definitely. If you could do us one favor informationally, could you get us back some info on the PSAP grant? Um, and maybe just a list right now of kind of where we stand with all grants you have, um, the dollar amount, and when they're set to expire. That would be helpful, too, because if, if we have to or don't have to revisit the E nine-one-one thing, you know, uh, or others, there might be other things. Uh, the ten thousand was mentioned, uh, some of these other ones. It's just good for us to have, and so we can make thoughtful decisions, uh, coming up. We'd appreciate that.
Got that, Matt?
If you could help us with that, Matt?
Got that, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, have a wonderful night.
Have a good night.
Thank you, take care.
Good night, guys, thank you.
Next up, fire department. Take care.
Yeah. Go ahead, Patty, go over here. Hey, Chief, how you doing? Hey, how are you?
Hey, what's up? Welcome, we have Chief Pond, as well as Commissioner Devine. Great to see both of you. And, uh, John, uh, do you have any opening thoughts as well, Patty? Uh, you're welcome to share any opening thoughts that you may have about the budget overall, and then, uh, at which point we'll turn it over to questions.
This, I believe, is my fourth year doing a budget, and I think I'm pretty comfortable with what's going on. I guess my opening statement would be, uh, Fire Department provides twenty-four-sevens fire protection service throughout the city. We have, uh, professional firefighters on duty, uh, for emergency medical calls, fire extinguishment, uh, fire prevention, code enforcement, and, uh, we're just ready to serve the public in their time of need.
Great. Um, Patty, any opening thoughts, or?
Thank him and, and the rest of the department for, uh, doing such a great job for the city.
Super. Okay, thank you both. I wanted to ask you, uh, similar, similar type questions as the police department, especially around his, uh, some of the buybacks. And, um, I know this past year, we had, um, some transfers into the buyback accounts, that were necessary because of various retirements that you had, and I believe you had quite a number of retirements this past year. And I wanted to ask you, how does that compare now to where you think things are going, in terms of your best estimation, um, for this current year? For example, um, let's take a look at vacation, personal, um, buyback was two hundred and, um, thirteen thousand seven hundred and two dollars. And on, right now, we only have appropriated one fifty. The vacation buyback wa, excuse me, sick leave buyback was three hundred and seventy-six thousand. And in the budget, you have it at two fifty. And I just wanted to see if you could kind of give us a comparison. How many folks did you have retire this year, and how many are you projecting for this, this coming year?
Um, this past fiscal year, I believe we had seven retirements, so... And to say exactly what the police chief said is true. We talk with employees, we find out when they're getting close to retirement, if they're gonna retire. And if they are, we project out a year ahead. It could happen, personal reasons, or they just wanna retire, they go ahead and retire, and then that adds an extra burden. So this is really a projection out for this, um, line item. I have, uh, historical numbers that I have written down here, and it, it exceeded what we looked for in the past, but sometimes we actually projected higher, and we didn't need all that money. So it's really a projection, I guess, we're predicting if somebody's gonna retire or not. And it's just a conversation with the person or the people that are gonna retire.
If you had to estimate, obviously, you were called upon to put this budget together, you had to put, use some figure to determine your buyback numbers. Did you use an estimate of, you know, seven again, um, five, two?
We actually used an estimate of four, and it's dependent on the rank of the individuals that are retiring, so we'll go off of that.
Does, do you feel comfortable still it's around the number of four?
I would say still around the number of four, and I'm comfortable with these numbers. Uh, we were able to take some money within our own budget and move it over to cover some of these expenditures in the past, unfilled positions that we were working with. So, I, every time we come up short somewhere, I look within my own budget and then make adjustments. That's where you'll see transfers within line items, personnel expenses.
There was transferred out of the personnel lines, um, and, and when I say the personnel lines, I'm talking about captain, lieutenant, and firefighters. Approximately three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, um, this fiscal year. Now, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand of it went into, uh, injured on duty. And so, but the other hundred and fifty thousand went into some of these buybacks. So I'm assuming that was some of these retirees, you transferred the money into the buyback accounts, ninety-five. And then some of it ended up, a little bit of it, about forty thousand ended up in overtime. Wanted to ask you about, you know, overtime generally. You know, the four hundred thousand number seems like a small number. You know, I know the locals expressed some real concern about that number. It certainly does look small to me. Um, what's, what's your take on this four hundred thousand number?
I think we, we probably will need more than four hundred thousand. That's why my, uh, requested amount was six hundred thousand. Even with the brownouts, I have some numbers in here. Since we've been browning out, we spent two hundred and thirty-four thousand in overtime. So, give or take, you're probably looking at a five hundred thousand dollar figure.
You had to do that, I know you've sometimes done it as like a weekly average. Like, pre-brownout versus post-brownout, like, what's the weekly average differential?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, but if you wanna go off the last year's overtime figures, we spent significantly more, um, eight hundred and twelve thousand is what I had last year.
Yeah, that's right, for FY fourteen, yep.
And this year, we're at five thirty-two, and that was with the four oh five that I got last year, and the budget that was approved by the city council, and then an additional hundred thousand, and then transfers in to make up the difference.
Okay. And, um, and obviously, you just, when did you start up, start the brownout policy?
Uh, December fourth, two thousand fourteen.
December, okay. So about a half a year of that, so presumably, that's gonna be the policy going forward for FY sixteen?
Uh, pretty much, uh, but one thing that I do have to caution the council on, and what I talked about last December, was you are re, reducing fire protection throughout the city when we have these brownouts. So, I, I don't like the brownouts myself, I think we need the fire protection, but I understand the city's fiscal conditions at this time.
Okay, um, I just wanna understand, i- if you could kind of break that out, I'd be interested to know now, like, what's the weekly? You know, you, you don't have to know that for tonight, but if you could kind of get back to us, or monthly, what, what does that correlate now on the pre-December versus post-December? I'd like to just have a compare of the two.
Would that be pay period per pay period?
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, what's that, every two weeks?
Yes.
Sure. Okay, I'm just gonna stop there. Uh, Councilor Lisi?
Chief, thanks for coming down. Commissioner Devine, thanks for coming down. Um, regarding the brownouts and the scheduled brownouts, um, how does that affect, um, the time that your staff has working? Because I would imagine that their union contracts say that they have a set amount of work time. And if you're browning out equipment, um, are we paying people even though the station may be browned out at that, at that point in time? So how does the brownout actually save us money? I guess that's the overarching question.
That's a good question. It's, actually, it's really simple. A brownout basically means that we move personnel from an engine, or a ladder truck dependent, right now it's just an engine, over to fill in slots on other apparatus. So, prime example, we shut down engine two, we have three firefighters in engine two. We fill slots on other, um, engines or truck companies or tactical vehicles, and that's how we save overtime. So when personnel take over, or take vacation time, then we have to fill in those slots. And we can do that by taking the personnel from the engine.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilor McGivern?
Chief, on the, the city ordinance calls for eighty-eight firefighters. I think we know the history of the last couple of years, and we appear to be running around eighty firefighters.
Currently, we're at seventy-two.
And can you explain the SAFER grant and what, how it's being used?
The SAFER grant, we actually have two SAFER grants. The first one we got in, excuse me, two thousand and twelve. We enacted it in two thousand thirteen. It actually runs out for five firefighters this July. Um, that one was for six hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars for two years. Pays for five full-time firefighters' salary and benefits, no strings attached. And we also have another SAFER grant for, uh, over a million dollars for eight firefighters for two years, full salary and benefits, and that'll run out next July. So right now, in this budget, the mayor had to go from sixty-seven firefighters to seventy-two firefighters. He gave us a total of eighty firefighters in that line item, because seventy-two from the city's budget and eight from the SAFER grant. That runs till next year.
Okay, so there, there are eighty firefighters.
We have the capacity to, we have to hire eight more.
City's paying for seventy-two.
We're at seventy-two now, same, for the same reason, civil service, you send for a list, we're waiting for a list, we're gonna hire eight more.
Okay. I, I think you, you heard me when I, when I talked to the, uh, chief about the dispatch, the E nine-one-one dispatch operators, you know, X amount of them being paid for by a grant.
Yes.
We, we are self-insured, and sooner or later, the SAFER grant is gonna dry up. I think it's a wonderful thing. But, the impact of, of a grant paying for the basic salary of any employee is gonna be on the unemployment fund, you know, if, if there was no monies to replace the grant monies being used this way. Have you had any conversations with the mayor about this?
Um, I always have conversations with the mayor, and he understands how we're, how this is working out. Really, the SAFER grant was put in place to help cities get through these difficult times. And it, exactly, it's helping us really well right now, because we were able to have thirteen firefighters paid for, didn't come out of the city's money, and now we could absorb five more back in. And with any hopes, next year, we'll be able to absorb the eight back in. Now, that only gets us to eighty. We should have eighty-eight, and every time I put a budget together, I ask for eighty-eight. So, that's been cut down to eighty or seventy-two in the city's budget.
Chief, some of us have been around, um, can understand the importance of eighty-eight, which I believe reflects, you know, more or less, three, three firefighters per shift, per apparatus, seven pieces of apparatus if we're operating and not browning out. So, i- if I remember correctly, the three is a minimum from National Fire, Fire Association, not Fire Association, Fire...
NFPA seventeen-ten.
I knew, I knew you'd be able to recite that. And it is scary, you know, brownouts, you know, when we know, or we don't know, but, we don't know when. But somewhere out there, a, a fire pumper is not ready to respond to a, to a fire call, and, you know, and so on. The other line item here, which has changed, is the fire alarm, alarm operators. Traditionally, we've run out at eight, and the final budget here says six.
Correct.
Can you just run us through that?
Um, I put in for eight. We should have at least eight fire alarm operators. As you all know, they take care of the traffic lights, municipal alarm system, and they also dispatch for the fire department. Any emergency calls that come in, go to dispatch there, and the alarm operator is the one that puts the call out and, and gets us the resources we need on the radio. I would like to have eight, but I know the council can't put them back in, so...
Chief, um, the same thing I said to, uh, to Chief Niceweger is, you know, I will do whatever I can to fight for the, for the fire department, you know, to, for service levels to be as level as possible, and for, uh, wha, whatever sources we can find in terms of revenue and assets that we need to, to, uh, keep the fire department going at what most of us consider bare minimum.
Bare minimum.
Actually, below bare minimum now with the brownouts. And I, but I do wanna say thank you, because I think you listened to some of the things we said last year, and, and certainly are, are living or trying to live within the budget. And at the same time, I don't... At the same time, I don't think any of us are happy about that, or most of us are not happy about that in terms of, of the reduction of service to, to our homeowners and business owners and the possibility of just, you know, at any given time, a tragedy. But, the, uh, the loss of the, uh, revenue from Mount Tom coal plant is just enormous, and it's gonna take us time to, to get it back. But thank you.
Thank you.
Any other counselors? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Tomlin, I apologize.
Thanks, Chief, for coming down, and, uh, Mr. Devine, thank you for coming here and support. Um, Chief, my, my concern, of course, is always, um, injured on duty and, and having a healthy fire department. Um, I think it's important to cut down on the overtime. On our, on my budget, I have zero for injured on duty, is there a reason for that?
I'm glad you asked that, Counselor. I know you asked a question for the police chief on that one. It's really just a transfer of money, basically. When a firefighter's pay is given, it's taken out of the line item for personnel, for firefighter, we'll say. It goes into the injured on duty fund, and then they pay him out of that fund. So it's always a zero balance, and if there's injuries throughout the year, it pays through that fund so they can track injured on duty pay. So really, it's not a loss for anybody, that person is out injured on duty, but their pay kind of filters through that account, so they know.
Through that, okay, so it's basically taken out of their salary and going into that?
It's their paycheck filtered through there.
Filtered through that, okay. And, and, um, how many do you have right now, injured on duty?
Injured on duty, currently, I have four.
Is it, could it be long-term?
I have, uh, two that are probably gonna be long-term and two others that are not, working on them.
And this just has to be, I mean, as time goes on, eventually, the person, individual might have to make a decision whether to retire or to stay on?
Correct, and that's where the projection comes in. Do I predict that these two people are gonna be off the books next year? I don't know.
And you're, you're short already, um, we're down to what, seventy-two with people injured and people on the, um, we have fire, the prevention department, you don't count those as basically ready to fight fires or get on?
They are full-time firefighters, so if we have an incident and they're on duty, they will respond and go there and, and assist. So, they do. And not to mention fire prevention, they have arson investigator in there, fire code enforcement officers, so they get involved in, in everything.
Okay. And it, does it, does it really affect the overtime when you have people out injured on duty?
It does.
Does, so?
Especially when you're short-staffed now.
Right, so tho- those people have to be replaced somewhere?
Correct.
On the shift or on, on apparatus?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, in that spirit of what Councilor Tomlin's asking about, one thing I want to ask, because I do have the retirement board coming in here next week, is talking about when you, when one of your firefighters, and it typically seems to be happening with your personnel, is identified as having some sort of form of serious disability. And it seems like the never-ending saga up here to, you know, for these people to get their disability pay, it seems that that's costing you a lot of additional money. Because if people can't get over onto disability, then they're required to hang on here, and we're paying them injured on duty.
You, you got it?
Yeah, I mean, can you, can you address this? And because this is really a cost associated that, uh, we, we really need to, to think about and talk about a little bit more.
If we have somebody on long, long-term injured on duty, and they're going through therapy, um, to recover, if it takes six months and nothing happens, and, or they need another surgery, then we just keep carrying this person on and on and on. And then once the process starts where I get a physician's note saying, this person's never gonna be a firefighter again, you have to put them in for disability retirement.
Right.
I put the paperwork forward. It takes anywhere from three to six months to get that approval done. So I'm carrying this person for that amount of time, thus incurring more overtime and/or browning out apparatus. So because a firefighter gets injured and we have to do this process, it could take up to a year, two years, to get this person off the books, get somebody back in to fill the slot.
Right.
And it just, and you're right, it's a saga.
Yeah, it seems to me that we've got to, to come up and develop a better practice. I'm gonna ask the retirement board about this next week, because it's really seeming to affect your department in particular. Because one is, you know, it's unnecessarily increasing your injured on duty.
Correct.
Which those positions have to be filled, backfilled, which is increasing your overtime.
Yes.
And it's for someone who really is entitled and has had, you know, obviously, medical verification, all these things to get their legitimate re- disability pension.
Correct.
Yeah, and yet, this process seeming to take forever, and, you know, years in some instances. So, I, I, I'm not, I don't like the way it's affecting the fire department, which means it's affecting taxpayers, you know, and, and your operations, Counselor.
Yeah, if you, if you don't mind, um, if the person that's looking for the disability is a lieutenant or higher, that's even more difficult, because we're holding that person on the book, that's preventing promotions. And then, you know, the trickle-down effect, where we could hire more firefighters.
Right.
We're just sort of at a standstill with that.
Right.
And I heard the police chief had seven injured on duty personnel, so it's affecting him in the same manner.
Right, right, right. So we're gonna have to talk about that process, and if there's any way that we can be doing a better job in terms of the management of those cases, where we have public safety employees being seriously injured and them getting their legitimate, you know, disab-, I mean, we're not looking for people to get things that they're not legitimately entitled to, but what they are, you know, is, it seems like there's a big expense related to these delays, you know?
Correct.
Um, I'd say, I'd ask you any questions about trying to, for cuts, there's nothing to cut, in my opinion. And I'm always looking for things to cut, your, your budget is very, very lean. So there's really, in my humble opinion, nothing here, but, uh, perhaps others have, uh, questions or thoughts? Counselor Bacon?
Thank you. I just have a comment, and I want to express appreciation for the way the department has been working through the cuts. And I know that oftentimes, I've seen and on, on occasion called the counselor of no. But, the point being, and the point that I want to make is, I believe that everybody should share in the pain that we're all dealing with right now, because none of this is fun for anybody involved. But I do appreciate the fact that you and your guys and women are doing it, and you have been doing it in the way to try to assure the best safety in a tough situation. And you heard us asking a lot of tough questions to the police department tonight, because, and I've expressed this, um, in finance committee to them, that, you know, they haven't been cut. And I believe we all have to be sharing in this, and the police chief did talk about hemorrhaging in terms of the budget. But I think the reality is, we're all in it together, and we all have to be in it together. And so, that's the spirit I come from, I try to share with folks. It's not like I'm against anybody, but I just think it does have to be fair. And so, I think you, DPW, some of the bigger departments have been bearing cuts. And this year, the police department is with you too, from my point of view, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, and, and thank you, Kevin, I'm Mr. President, sorry. So I, I just want to, uh, and thanks, Chief, and thanks, Patty, um, for your participation. The, um, I, I just want to ask one question about a budget, then I'll make a comment, just, the acting out of grade, Chief?
Yes.
Okay, one, can you just explain that to me one more time? You explained it last year, and I just need to have another explanation, please. And then, then also on the, uh, if, if I read this right, we're about twelve-five through the, halfway through the fiscal year. And so, why do we need the whole forty-five? And when we, when we spent thirty-two in FY fourteen, which is, which is down from, well down from FY thirteen. So you've certainly, certainly made major enroils in that one small item.
It's what happens when you have the proper staffing where you need it. So we cut down, when you, you hire or you promote people to officers, that's how you cut down on acting out of grade, because if a lieutenant is, takes a vacation day, then a firefighter, instead of paying for an officer to fill that slot, a firefighter can step up and act as lieutenant for that day. And they get a stipend for doing that, that's where that money goes to. So when you have the proper staffing in place, you're gonna cut down on not only higher overtime rates for officers, but you won't have to pay the acting out of grade.
So wouldn't it be a lieutenant going as a captain, it'd be a firefighter going as a lieutenant?
It could be a lieutenant going to a captain also. If the captain takes a tour, four tours or four vacation days in a row, then the lieutenant will take that spot and do any appropriate paperwork, or the same duties that the captain would do.
And that would be by contract?
Yes. It's all con-, all contractual stuff.
All right, so, okay.
So, the, the answer to your question is, we're probably gonna need that money. Even though it says forty-five, I'm sure next year, as I said, whenever there's a shortcoming, I look within my own budget first, move items, move money around to where it has to go. So, you never know what's gonna happen yet, next year, maybe four officers retire, and then I'm paying acting out of grade next fiscal year.
And then just on that point, um, so you heard the chief say, uh, four policemen, and then maybe fifteen policemen the following year. So, is, just, what, what's, what's, so you said a few?
Four, four, we're projecting four this next fiscal year. And my sympathies to the police chief, because it's tough when that many people leave at one time.
But you don't expect that for, any, anytime soon for your department?
I do not, I do not.
Okay.
We're relatively young now.
I appreciate that, thank you, Patty. So, uh, with that, I, I said it before, uh, in the last few meetings, that, that the fire department takes on the chin, and the police department does not, uh, which is, which has already been said kind of up here tonight before, so. Uh, and I think, I think other counselors have said that this is a fairly lean budget. And when you look at it in past fiscal years, was expended FY thirteen was eight point six, and was budgeted, just three short years later, is seven point one. That's quite a, that's pretty dramatic.
It is.
So, a- and none of us like, no one wants to make a cut here, a- and not one counselor wants to make a cut. Every single, I don't want to hear it from anybody, any, anybody, not one counselor here wants to make a cut. So all fifteen of us want to support it to the fullest extent possible. So, and anything said otherwise is, is untrue. So, it's unfortunate that we have to propose amendments, and last year, Chief, thank goodness, that there was this council that supported many, many cuts that had to be made, um, maybe not as many as anybody wanted, but, uh, and I voted for a lot of them. But for your budget for this year, it's, it's tough for me to see where, at least on this page, we haven't got the next page, which I'm sure Kevin will lead us still.
It's not any better on the other page.
Right, but it's tough to see where it could be, it could be done. Thank you, Chief, for your, and Patty, for your work on this.
Thank you.
I, uh, I included page twenty-one in my remarks on no cuts, so, uh, I got, I don't, I don't, I just don't see it, that's my, again, my personal view, I'm only one of fifteen, but I just don't see it, it's so Spartan as it is. Any other thoughts, questions, comments?
Just quickly, uh, Chief, do you see any possibilities of any new grant, grants coming in for this fiscal year?
That's a great question, actually, we have put in for a couple more grants. We put in for a new ladder truck for nine hundred and seventy-five thousand. And we're waiting, hopefully, we get that. If we do, that's a ten percent match, um, but I think that's well worth the cost. And we also put in for another safer grant for five, uh, and that's for six hundred and forty thousand. So, we would hope to fill that void, where we just, we're gonna lose five this July, so we're hoping maybe we get another five and keep, keep going on and on.
That's great, thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
You have all three of the new ones that we bonded for, the new trucks, that you have all of those on, and?
Yes.
How's that all going?
It's, they're working great.
And what did you end up doing with the three pieces that they replaced? Uh, how did you redeploy those, if you recall?
We, we put them up on Southampton Road, and, no.
I see somebody has one, it seems like, I won't use names, I do know the individual, but I do see somebody bought a piece of equipment on Southampton Road.
Proceeds went into the fund that paid for the police cruisers.
I'm waiting for it to be driving around town, uh.
They were actually, um, trade-ins from, to KME, and then the firefighters that went over to KME and, and made a side deal, and they bought those from KME, so they actually purchased those. The deployment of the new appar-, of the new engines, engine one and engine two are downtown. Two is the one that we've been browning out, uh, and engine three is up on North Hampton Street.
So, equipment-wise, we're in pretty good shape now, correct?
For pumps, yes, but our ladder trucks are aging, our reserve ladder truck is a nineteen-seventy-eight. So, yeah.
It's got wooden ladders?
It does, actually, no.
Okay. So we may have to revisit that at some point.
It's in my capital wishlist, uh, so.
But the biggest one that we have for your department, only tangentially, because it's your alarm room, guys, is, we need to get you about, what, about a million dollars for these traffic intersections?
Definitely.
And so that's something we absolutely need to, to get going, because I know those ten intersections need a serious overhaul.
Yes, and I know, uh, Joe came in and gave a great presentation.
He did, Joe, as always, yeah. Okay, great, so we, we have to work on getting that, uh, that money.
Right, I mean, if I could add a couple more comments, I, so everyone's aware that, uh, we did receive a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar grant a couple of years ago for communications equipment. So, we've been working angles with different vendors, and we've worked one out where we got, uh, Marcus Communication, they're from Connecticut, and they came up and they installed a brand-new microwave. Now, with the older system, only one repeater hits a certain area. With Simocast, all the repeaters light up at the same time, and it, it floods the whole city with signal, so. We're proud of that, it's analog system, it has selectors on there, so we can go digital in the future. We'll need to purchase radios, so we're looking at other grants to try and do that. So that's a plus, and we're happy with that, and we're going down that road.
Super.
Excuse me, can I just have the chief?
Yeah, sure.
Tell them, tell the counselors about the grant that you got for the Homestead Avenue? I believe it was from Lowe's, and to do over that station and the kitchen and everything?
Right, that's another grant we had, for Home Depot came in and, and re-, refinished the kitchen at Station Six for us. They put in new cabinets, painted the floors, did some other things. That was, I think that was a three thousand dollar grant. And they had workers from Home Depot come in and volunteer their time to, to work with us and put that stuff in there, so. We're looking at all options now. I had another one here. What I want to talk about is, we've transitioned over into the twenty-first century when it comes to reporting software for our department. Uh, we got a new reporting system in, so whenever there's a call, we go out, and we have to put it into a system, and then the state picks up that information and they compile it. The new system we got, we put everything in there, it's all web-based, you can do it from your cell phone, from an iPad, you can do it from anything, it's all web-based, fully secured. It has di- many different modules to include where all the hydrants are in the city, uh, all the occupancies. I already talked to the historical commission, they came in, we met. We can put in buildings for the historical commission, take photos of them, put all that information in the cloud, no extra cost, unlimited storage space. So I opened that program up, I'm working with the building department, the Board of Health. We've, uh, compiled all the information on the abandoned buildings in the city. Currently, we have three hundred and seven, so.
Eight hundred and seven abandoned buildings?
Vacant abandoned buildings. Uh, some are with structural deficiencies, and some are without. We've been placing X's on buildings, uh, so we're, we're, we're streamlining operations.
It's an incredible number when you think about it.
It really is, if you look up, and even with this new software, I can put it up on Google Maps, and it just shows where all the buildings are in the city that are abandoned, vacant. It can show where all the medical calls, fire calls, everything, so it's really impressive. If anybody wants to see it, just email me.
He just showed it to me tonight, it's, it's unbelievable.
Oh, cool, I'll have to check that out, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, Counselor Tomlin.
Um, thank you. I had, um, I had filed an order, uh, to have the fire department, the building department, um, the historical commission, Marco's office, to work on kind of, you know, the, as you were talking about, these different buildings. To talk about kind of the, the inventory, uh, you know, the historical, but also the whole, kind of like, the problem list. I think we, we referred to it as the problem list via email. So, now that you have this, uh, access to this, is, is this something that you're working with them as well in, in terms of this communication, or?
Yes, due to your order, they met with me at fire headquarters one day, I put it up on the board, we went through the whole process. And they understand we can identify buildings by names, we could say historical building and put it under that classification. So they could run a list of all historical buildings, however they want. and put it under that classification, so they could run a list of all historical buildings, however they wanna do it.
And the problem list in terms of the deficiencies and?
Yes, we would put those in other categories and classify them under, under other, um, categories.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President, and we did address this issue in public safety, and what we found was the different departments had a different priority list.
Yes.
And so we're in the process of asking all the departments to get together and come back to us with the top ten, that they can come to a consensus on. So, this should help go to that, uh, project, right?
I have many more than ten.
Well, no, no, but we have to focus.
Yes.
On what might be doable, so that we're not totally overwhelmed by the three hundred and six, right?
Correct. Now, they're not all, you know?
Right.
Just shacks, you know, there, there's some good buildings out there, but this is just what we have identified at this time, thanks to Board of Health, Building Department, and, um, whenever somebody's injured on duty, I can bring them back light duty, they work on these projects, so we're using all of our resources at the fire department. I just want everybody to be aware of that, that we're doing our part.
Maybe I can coordinate with you at some point to have the council over for a tour?
That'd be great.
That would be good, yeah.
And, uh, the emergency operations center is in the fire department also, so we have everything set up in there. The parade ran from there the last two years, um, and we can put things up on the board, you can come in and look at them, and we continue to get eight or nine thousand dollar grants every year for emergency operations to update our emergency operations center, which we've been doing, so.
All right, any other questions, thoughts, comments? All right, great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it. Uh, unless there's anything else? Uh, that motion to adjourn is in order, all in favor of adjourning?